My mic was not on for all of that. I apologize. I think I heard Justice Stortini say he couldn't hear me. Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate that. So my mic is now on. Madam Clerk, can you continue?
Under Agenda Item Two, a motion by Councilors Bruni and Shoemaker resolved that the minutes of regular council meeting of April 11, 2022 be approved?
All in favor? Motion is carried.
Under Agenda Item Four, Declaration of pecuniary interest with respect to the planning application A422ZOP522 Allen Side Road, Counselor Nero has declared a conflict as his daughter lives within the notification area, and Counselor Shoemaker has declared as the applicant is a client of the law firm.
Any other conflicts, counsel? Seeing none?
Under Agenda Item Five, a motion by Councilors Nero and Shoemaker resolved that the agenda and addendum number one for May 2, 2022 city council meeting as presented be approved?
All in favor? Motion is carried.
And Agenda Item 6.1 is the 2020 Medal of Merit Award presentation.
I'm very pleased to recognize an outstanding citizen, the Honorable Ray Stortini, and the tremendous organization, the Shingwok Residential School Center, with the City of Sault Ste. Marie's Medal of Merit for 2020. I want to thank them all for their patience and us being able to schedule this ceremony in appropriate time. Sault Ste. Marie is extremely proud of our citizens who individually or as a member of a group continue to excel in various capacities, bringing great pride to our community in a way that should be recognized and celebrated. In 1969, Sault Ste. Marie City Council established the Medal of Merit Award to annually honor such excellence and achievement. A citation was approved at that time which reads, "The mayor and members of city council have long recognized the need to pay tribute to those special individuals or groups who achieve top honors in athletic, cultural, or academic fields, or who make outstanding contributions to our community." Presentation of the Medal of Merit Award, which includes the medal, pin, and citation, represents Sault Ste. Marie's highest honor. The medal has the city coat of arms embossed across its face. The colors of the ribbon and the pin, gold, blue, and gray, are intended to reflect the image of Sault Ste. Marie as a flourishing and prosperous city. The blue represents the water or seaway, and the gray band represents industry, steel in particular. The significance attached to this medal is indicative of an exceptional achievement or an exceptional contribution. Each year Medal of Merit recipients are chosen by the Medal of Merit Committee comprised of the mayor acting as chair and individuals representing a cross-section of our community. I'd like to acknowledge and thank the members of the 2019 Medal of Merit Committee, Dion Elji, Sheila Purvis, Jack Ostrowski, and His Honored Justice Romuald Qualick. Medal of Merit Award recipients are selected from all walks of life. The list of past honorees includes scientists, athletes, academics, and community builders, people who have contributed to the betterment of our community. Since the inception of the award, we have recognized over 150 citizens, including Dr. Roberta Bondar, Dr. David Wald, the Hollingsworth family, Team Jacobs, Mac and BJ Marku, Diane Marshall, Alajean Richter, Gail Broad, Tony Martin, Steve Butland, and Ron Irwin, just to mention a few. Today, retired Justice Ray Stortini and the Shingwok Residential School Center officially joins this impressive group. Starting with Justice Stortini. For decades, Justice Stortini has served our community in a number of capacities, and it is important to recognize and acknowledge that his contributions to our community go well beyond his impressive professional accomplishments. The longevity of Justice Stortini's volunteerism and community service speaks to Sault Ste. Marie's best qualities, and the Medal of Merit is a fitting recognition of his service and his commitment to our community. Justice Stortini's many past activities include various boards of governor positions with the Algoma Health Unit, the Children's Aid Society, the Soup Kitchen, the Ken Brown Recovery Home, and Algoma University. He was trustee of United Appeal Service, the past president of the Sioux Family YMCA, and the St. Joseph Island Lions Club. He's also a lifetime member of the Arts Council of Algoma and the G Marconi Society, as well as a former Sault Ste. Marie city councillor. Retired Justice of the Ontario Superior Court of Justice, he holds a BA from the University of Western Ontario and an LLB from York University. Justice Stortini spent his early years as a steel plant laborer, Great Lakes seaman for Canada Steamship Lines, and as an insurance adjuster. After graduating from law school, he had a general practice and was a special federal prosecutor, as well as being the first director, area director of legal aid. He was appointed a judge of York County in Toronto in 1971, to the Algoma District Court in 1976, and then appointed a justice of the Superior Court of Justice in 1990, a post he held until retirement in 2004. As a young lawyer, I appeared before him a number of times and was always impressed by his kindness and his knowledge. Notably, Justice Stortini headed, Justice Stortini, when he was a lawyer, headed a pro bono project to save 300 members, the Bachelawana Band, from eviction at Bachelawana Bay. An accomplished writer, Justice Stortini published only in Canada, Memories of an Italian-Canadian, and Act One of the Arrow to the Moon, which was performed by Cree students in Sault Ste. Marie at the premier's performance at the 1967 National Canadian National Exhibit. Justice Stortini, thank you for your efforts to better our community, both through your career and in your life outside of your professional work. This time, I welcome you to come forward for the presentation of the citation.
Yeah, you're coming down here, Your Honor.
I'm now going to call upon His Honor to say a few words.
Well, Mayor Christian Provostano, members of council, I almost said, "Your worship", because when I was on this council, we referred to the mayor as "Your worship". And the late John Rhodes, when he was member, when he was mayor, he used to say, "You may honor your guys, but everybody honors me." John Rhodes was very quick with the one-liners. I remember one time at the Marconi Hall, he was supposed to give a, an address, and they had an awful time with, with the microphones, and he leaned over to me and said, you know, he said, "There are more dead mics at the Marconi Hall than in the Irish cemetery." Yeah. Before I go any further, I want to congratulate my fellow recipients for the work that they've done for the Residential School Survivors Movement. In the 19, sorry, in 2009, I was proud to be a member of the Board of Directors, Board of Governors, actually, and the Senate of Algoma University Camp, University College. It was then a college of the Renshaw, and under the control of the Renshaw South, the Renshaw Senate. In, before that time, Algoma University College had tried to get full university status and failed because of opposition, but we tried again in 2009, and we had the support of city council and other agencies in the Sioux. And we had the able leadership of Chairman of the Board of Governors, Bud Wildman, and President Celia Ross, and they went to Toronto, and by unanimous vote of all three parties, the Algoma University Act was brought into force, and Algoma obtained full university status. The, as a result of achieving university status, there were discussions with the Shingwok people about the future of Aboriginal education in our area. And Shingwok people brought in Chief Benson Benai of the, he was Grand Chief of the Three Fires Confederacy in the, in the States, and he came and gave them advice about native education. And he came to address our senate and shared a story with us, which I'll share with you. He said, "At that time, the National Space Agency in the States was sending out an exploration vehicle, the Enterprise, and in case they found some life forms in space, they, they brought with them some music, art, artifacts, things of that nature, because the language would be a barrier." And they asked, the head of, of the space agency asked Chief Benson Benai to write something in the Aboriginal language, just in case they found some life forms. And Chief, Chief Benai agreed, wrote something out, put in a sealed envelope, and handed it to the chief of NASA. Years later, the two of them happened to be sitting side by side at an event, and the chief of NASA said, "You know, I've always wondered what you had written in that envelope." And Chief Benson Benson said, "All right, I'll tell you. I wrote down, 'Do not make treaties with these people.'" I thank you for those kind remarks that you made, Mayor Provostano. And I know that there's an old Chinese proverb, "Man who wears many hats liable to get swirled head." And the wife of Prime Minister Mike Pearson always said that the duty, the role of a prime minister's wife is to keep him humble. And she also said once that behind every successful man, there's a surprised woman. But you know, I may have done a few things for the good during my lifetime, but I've been more than well repaid for those efforts. I'll give you one example. When I was very young, I was very active in the local YMCA on March Street, and the physical director was a man named Gus Culkin, who was an Olympic athlete from Estonia. In addition to being the physical director at the Y, he was also the camp director at the YMCA camp at Idlin Lake called Camp Wadding. And our school principal, Anna McCray, paid out her own pocket to send kids in our neighborhood during the Great Depression, send these kids to Camp Wadding. Anyway, when Gus was the camp director, I volunteered to be a camp councillor. And when Gus retired, the Y hired a professor from Michigan College of Mining and Technology, now known as Lake Superior State College. The man's name was Clayton Holloway. And he asked me if I would volunteer to help as a camp councillor and also as assistant director, which I agreed. And usually, we were the only three adults in, in the camp, Holloway and his wife and myself, plus there was Mrs. Ayo who came in to cook meals. And usually, when the kids were quiet in their, in their cabins, the Holloways would invite me to their cabin for a cup of tea. On one such occasion, apparently Clayton Holloway noticed that I couldn't walk from my cabin to the cookhouse with a kid under each arm and two of them grabbing my shirt. Half the kids in the camp came from, from the orphanage, which is, which was located where the Canadian Legion Hall is now. And they really lacked, really needed a father figure, and I just couldn't, I couldn't get away from them. And I guess Holloway noticed that, and he said, "You know, Ray, you have a way with kids. Have you ever thought of being a teacher?" I said, "Oh, I'd love to be a teacher, but I, I never went to high school, and I don't have any qualifications." He said, "Well, what qualifications do you have?" I said, "Well, I have four years secondary school, shops and business, and Sioux Technical School." He said, "You know, I taught school at Springfield College in Massachusetts, and they turned out physical education coaches and directors." He said, "I'll write them a letter, and you write one too, and see what happens." Well, I got a reply immediately, and he said, "You're just the kind of guy we want. Come on down." So I was tickled, thinking I was on cloud nine. But then I ran into Jimmy Greco, later His Honor Judge James Greco of the Provincial Court. And Jim had graduated in law from Wayne State University in Michigan and qualified to practice law in the state of Michigan. But before he graduated, he got married, and his wife was reluctant to move away from the Sioux, so he had to start all over again in Ontario. He said, "Unless you plan to work in the States, be careful, because Ontario doesn't always accept American degrees." Well, Jimmy kind of rained on my parade. And in desperation, I sent the same letter that I sent to Springfield, I sent it to the only universities I knew, University of Toronto, Queens, and Western. I got a cold reply from University of Toronto. "When you have eight grade 13 subjects, you may, you may reapply." However, I got a different response from Queens and Western. In those days, the words "adult education" were not yet coined. If you didn't go to high school after elementary school or university after high school, you missed the boat. But you know, after the end of World War II, a lot of the war veterans wanted to continue their education with government help, and you couldn't send these guys who'd been through war to elementary school. First of all, they wouldn't fit in those little seats that they had. So Western and Queens developed what they called a Special Adult Program. If you could pass an aptitude test to prove that you can handle work at the university level, they would take you on probation, and if you missed one course, you were out. And in addition to your degree course, you had to have taken five grade 13 subjects. Well, I went, I picked Western because they had a great reputation for physical education under the head of a famous coach named John Metrus. So I went down and passed the aptitude test, started my first year, and I had a real rough time because I had to take math, physical education, statistics and whatnot, you had to have math. And that, the math we took at university presupposes that you had five years of algebra, trigonometry, geometry, and calculus, which I had none of. So I had a real tough time, but somehow, on a wing and a prayer, I managed to pass. And in my second year, I decided to switch to pre-law, and then from there, I was accepted at Oscar Hall Law School. After graduation, I came to the Sioux, started my own practice, and I had a very busy practice. I never made lots of money. I never turned anyone down that needed my help. And one example, we were talking briefly before we came in here, the, there's a group of Bachelawana Band that located themselves at Bachelawana Bay when they were moved away from Whitefish Island for the construction of the canal. And at one point in the 1960s, the Miser Seaplane Company gave eviction notice to all 300 men, women, and children. And I got involved and managed to find a solution, and that was one of the reasons why the province of Ontario decided to give me the Order of Ontario. Then, while I was practicing law on the Sioux, on my way to the courthouse, I'd be plagued by this idea that what happens if I get sick, a stroke or, or a heart attack, what's going to happen to my family? And if I get to reach retirement age, how am I going to support myself and my family? Now, weird about once in a while, but then you get busy and you forget. But then, out of the blue, one day, I was appointed to the Toronto Court. While there, I did some research in the cost of keeping even a non-dangerous offender in jail and his family on social assistance. I decided we should find an alternative, and the alternative was known as community service order, where you put a non-dangerous offender to work for some charity in the community. And the last time I looked at the statistics, there are millions of hours donated by non-dangerous offenders, and I had never heard of any bad incident throughout all those years. So, so I had a lot to be thankful for, and I want to thank council for bestowing this honor on me. I only wish that my parents could have lived long enough to share this, this, this honor with me. Like most immigrants, they believe that the only way up from the pick and shovel was education, and they would have appreciated what they heard here today. So I wanted to thank you for bestowing that honor upon me. I want to thank my family and friends for sharing in this occasion. I ask God to bless this council and grant it good judgment and vision. And I want to thank Clayton Holloway, wherever he is. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, Your Honor. Sault Ste. Marie's efforts on the truth and reconciliation journey continue to be led by the local Indigenous community. The Shingwok Residential School Center is doing much of the heavy lifting, providing our community and communities across the country with the history and information we need to understand and acknowledge difficult truths of our past. The Shingwok Residential School Center is at the forefront of setting the historical record straight so that all of us have a clear, better, and more truthful understanding of Indigenous history and Canadian history. I am grateful that the longstanding efforts, staff, volunteers, and the leadership of the Shingwok Residential School Center and Algoma University are being recognized through the Medal of Merit, and I'm honored to have been part of it. The Shingwok Residential School Site was home to an Indian residential school from 1874 to 1970. Through the efforts of local Indigenous communities and residential school survivors, the Shingwok site has been transformed into a place of learning, commemoration, and healing. As one of only 14 remaining residential school buildings across Canada, and one of the only former residential schools used as a university, the Shingwok site holds national significance. The Shingwok site was the location of the first large-scale residential school survivor reunion in 1981. It is home to the longest-running community archives dedicated to residential schools, featuring the award-winning reclaiming Shingwok Hall exhibit. The Shingwok Residential School Site represents decades of sustained community resilience to ensure that the legacies of residential schools is honored and remembered. Indeed, we owe it, we owe it to the children of Shingwok Alumni Association and the survivors of both the Shingwok and Wampanoast Indian Residential Schools our gratitude and our respect. Their commitment to truth and their persistence in the face of decades of indifference is a sterling example of resilience and leadership. I want to recognize and thank everyone who has contributed to the Shingwok Residential School Center, in particular, the survivors of the residential school system. The importance of your dedication to preserving and sharing your history and your personal stories cannot be overstated. We are incredibly grateful for your contributions. They have, and they will continue to enrich and improve our community and our country. I would like to call upon Mary Wabino-McKay, Representative from Shingwok Residential Schools, to say a few words. Welcome, welcome to council, Mary.
Gwich, big gwich, everyone. Wachay, misway, bojol, ani. Good afternoon, everyone. Kichmigwich for the honor to be here to receive this medal on behalf of Algoma University and the Shingwok Residential School Center. My name is Mary Wabino-McKay. I'm the Vice President, Yagned Mishnabi Initiatives Equity and Student Success at Algoma University, and a recent community member here at Sault Ste. Marie. I moved to the Sioux a little over a year ago to take this position at Algoma University. And the reason I came to Algoma University was because of its commitment to reconciliation and ensuring the truth of the Indian residential school legacy continues to be told through the stories of the survivors. I too am a first-generation residential school survivor. There are four generations of residential school survivors in my family, so the impact of residential schools cannot be overstated. This local recognition is really, is really valued, as the Shingwok Residential School Center is deeply rooted in Sault Ste. Marie and its local history. The Shingwok Residential School Center was one of three residential schools in this local area that operated locally since the 1800s. Their impacts continue to be felt by Indigenous people across Canada. More than 85 First Nation communities were impacted by this residential school, Shingwok Residential School Center. They came from across Canada as young as five years old. The work of the Shingwok Residential School Center is only possible because of the tireless work of the Children of Shingwok Alumni Association. They are the survivors of the Shingwok Residential School. They are now elders and have been working since 1981 to not only preserve the legacy of the Shingwok site, but to ensure the truth of this country's history regarding the truth of its treatment of Indigenous people is told and to never be repeated. Evolving out of the Shingwok Project in 1975 or 79, the Shingwok Residential School Center is dedicated to sharing, healing, and learning in relation to the legacy of residential schools. I want to acknowledge the honorable judge who was here previous to me, who made reference to Eddie Benton Benay. Eddie Benton Benay was the Grand Chief of the Three Fires Medallion Lodge, to which I am a member. And I knew Eddie personally for many years. Edward Benton shared with the world the teachings of the seven grandfathers. And it's through the teachings of the seven grandfathers that we're able to stand here today to share our story from a place of humility, bravery, love, respect, and humility. I want to also acknowledge the staff of the Shingwok Residential School Center, the former director, Elizabeth Webb Kennegeth, as well as Krista McCracken, Maddie Bethano, as well as Jenna Lemay. I want to acknowledge Shirley Horn, who is a survivor of the Shingwok Residential School Center, who continues to be involved. I also want to acknowledge all of the many volunteers and many people who have been a part of the Shingwok Residential School Center for so many years, who continue to do this work tirelessly. And we say miquetch to the city for this for acknowledging the work of the Shingwok Residential School Center. Look forward to working together to bring forward the truth through training and other opportunities so that the truth can be told across this country. We're living in 2022, and there are far too many people in this country who don't know their own history. It's not Indigenous history, it's Canadian history, and that's where we need to acknowledge. Miquetch.
So the before I call you up here to take a picture, I do want to acknowledge specifically Shirley and her contributions, and frankly, her friendship and kindness and guidance that she showed me over the time that I've been the mayor of the community. It's truly valued and and it's it's very important. So thank you very much. We have a plaque because we're giving it to a group. You have the same medal that we gave to Justice Ortiz. We don't have multiple medals, so we have framed the medals. If I can get you all to come down and we'll present that to you. That concludes the formal portion of today's presentation. I'd like to thank everybody for coming. I'd like to thank city staff who helped arrange and organize this ceremony, and hope that all of you enjoy the dinner that we have set out for you in the Hamilton Room. Thank you. Madam Clerk, we can move on.
Mr. Mayor, as soon as the council chamber clears, the recipients of the 2021 Community Development Award will come into the chamber.
Perfect. Nice connection with Chief, though. He bent again.
The 2021 Community Development Award is with respect to the Queenstown IDA Drug Mart at 302 Queen Street East. And present, we have Joe Greco, Sam DeSuma, Mark Fabrero, as well as Bob Burns, the Chair of the Community Development Award Committee.
Joe, Sam, Mark, Bob, welcome to council. Happy to have you here. In 1998, City Council initiated a Community Development Award Program. The purpose of the award program is to recognize significant achievement in community development, highlight successful development ideas that others can use, and inspire other projects to meet the standards set by successful projects. Behalf the City of Sioux-Saint Marie and the Planning Advisor Committee, I would like to congratulate the recipients of the 2021 Community Development Award, Queenstown IDA Drug Mart. I'd like to rep I'd like to recognize the representatives of the Queenstown IDA Drug Mart that we have with us here tonight, Sam DeSuma, Joe Greco, and Mark Fabrero. I also want to recognize Frank Perna, who was unable to attend tonight's meeting. The building at the Queenstown IDA Drug Mart is currently located in is part of Sioux-Saint Marie's historic downtown that is also known as the Davis Block, named after one of the building's more notable occupants, Davis Clothing, from the early 1940s until 1989. Davis Block was rented out for office space for many years after Davis Clothing left. In addition to the former Davis Clothing Building, IDA's location includes another one of the oldest storefronts in the downtown, 308 Queen Street East, which has been home to many businesses over the years. To facilitate the opening of the Queenstown IDA Drug Mart, the wall that separated the two addresses was torn down. The renovation of this building greatly improves the visual quality of the downtown and aligns with initiatives revitalized the downtown area. The upgraded facade also aligns with the overall heritage of the downtown, preserving the uniqueness of the area. It was also estimated that the new Drug Mart would provide five full-time positions and 15 part-time positions. Overall, the Queenstown IDA Drug Mart activated an underused building in the downtown and created a space that benefits our entire community. I'm pleased to present the 2021 Community Development Award to Queenstown IDA Drug Mart. I'd like to welcome all of you to come to the front so I can present with you the plaque.
And under Agenda Item 6.3, we have a proclamation for Museum Month.
Throughout our community museums, art galleries, inherited sites reflect our local history and culture and contribute to our economy by welcoming visitors and tourists to our community. This month provides an opportunity to increase awareness of our community's museums in Sioux-Saint Marie, celebrate the contribution these institutions make to quality of life, education, and economic development. We encourage the community visiting museum to unleash the power of museums. The Canadian Bush Plage Heritage Center encourages visitors to learn the science behind mesmerizing Guinness World Record accomplishments with the Science of Guinness World Records Northern Tour until May 12. Whereas the Irmittinger Cleric National Historic Site will continue to host Story Steep and Stone Performance Series and the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council Art Gala Event on May 14. Whereas May 18, 2022 is International Museum Day, the Sioux-Saint Marie Museum in Atomica have partnered together to showcase the importance of natural history with a special exhibition and event at the museum. And therefore, I, Christian Provinzano, as Mayor of the City of Sioux-Saint Marie, do hereby proclaim May 22 as May is Museum Month, and encourage all local citizens and visitors to once again visit our galleries and our museums. Thank you.
Under Agenda Item 6.4, there is a proclamation regarding Mental Health Week.
Whereas Canadian Mental Health Association Mental Health Week promotes mental health awareness through education camps, activities, and events held in Sioux-Saint Marie and across the Algoa District. CMHA offers practical ways to maintain and improve mental health and support recovery from mental health problems and illnesses. Whereas the Canadian Mental Health Association encourages everyone to get real for mental health. When someone is struggling, you don't have to fix their pain. Tune in and see through their eyes, this is empathy. Whereas you can understand even if you don't agree, understand someone's feelings, this is empathy. We may be different, but we're not on different sides. See the world as others do, this is empathy. And Mental Health Week get real about how to help before you weigh in, tune in. Canadian Mental Health Association encourages everyone to speak up and take action, improve mental health for all Canadians. An increased awareness understands of mental health will promote the use of mental health services and supports, ensure Canadians with mental health problems and illnesses are afforded the opportunity to recover. The Canadian Mental Health Association actively supports and encourages good mental health in all aspects of our life. Now, therefore, I, Christian Provinzano, as Mayor of the City of Sioux-Saint Marie, do hereby proclaim May 2 to May 8, 2022, as Canadian Mental Health Association Week. And throughout the year. Thank you.
Under Agenda Item 6.5, a proclamation of melanoma and skin cancer awareness month.
Whereas it is imperative that communities across Canada be reminded of the importance of sun safety. Whereas overexposure to UV radiation is one of the major causes of melanoma and non-melanoma skin cancers. Whereas skin cancers is the most common of all cancers. One in six Canadians born in 1990s will get skin cancer in their families. Many people seek sun without taking the advisable precautionary measures and are aware that any darkening of skin color, including a tan, is indicative of UV damage. Whereas skin self-examination should be performed on a monthly basis because skin cancers are highly treatable when detected early. Whereas Save Your Skin Foundation is dedicated to fighting against non-melanoma skin cancers, melanoma, and ocular melanoma through national-wide education, advocacy, and awareness. Now, therefore, I, Christian Provinzano, as Mayor of the City of Sioux-Saint Marie, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2022 as Melanoma and Skin Cancer Awareness Month, the City of Sioux-Saint.
And under Agenda Item 6.6, a proclamation Brain Tumor Awareness Month.
Whereas the causes of and cure for brain tumors are unknown, and early detection and treatment is vital to prolonged and improved survival. And whereas brain tumors strike people of all ages, crossing all economic, social, and ethnic boundaries, and whereas brain tumors are the most common cause of solid cancer death in children and young adults. Whereas approximately 27 Canadians a day are diagnosed with a brain tumor, and whereas the mission of the Brain Tumor Foundation in Canada is to reach every Canadian affected by a brain tumor through support, education, information, and research. Now, therefore, I, Christian Provinzano, as Mayor of the City of Sioux-Saint Marie, do hereby proclaim that May is Brain Tumor Awareness Month in the City of Sioux-Saint Marie, and ask everyone to wear gray on May 27, 2022, to raise awareness about brain tumors and to show support for those who have brain tumors. Thank you.
And that will bring us to consent. I do have an amending motion under Agenda Item 7.11, so 7.11 has been accepted from consent.
Sorry, just give me one second, Madam Clerk. My computer has timed out because we were quite late in getting back to this. So 711 is exempted? Is that correct?
That's accepted from consent, yes.
And I think in accord with the procedural bylaw or the changes to the procedural bylaw, I now have to publicly acknowledge, let me just see here, yeah, that a request has been made to be heard without notice and has been received. The clerk has circulated that request. That request was made by Mr. Mark Brown, and he is available should.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I received an email from Mark Brown to the effect that he's now unable to attend the meeting.
Okay, so I'll continue on with that then. So we're on the consent agenda, so I will just start here. Counselor Christian.
Mr. Mayor, I just have since 7.11, I just have the 1710 of the Algoa Trail Network through you to Travis Anderson, if I may.
Go ahead.
Travis, Mr. Anderson, how much funding is available from the Federal Active Transportation Grant? Do we have that number?
Through Mr. Mayor to Counselor Christian. At this point, we're hoping that we can leverage approximately, I'll have to pull the exact number here, but I believe it's around 340,000 that we're hoping to leverage from that grant.
So you're saying that we're receiving the 340 or we're contributing 340?
Sorry, we're contributing 340. We're hoping to to leverage 280,000.
Okay, thank you. Do you have an estimated total cost of what it would take to develop the whole 30 kilometers of trail?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Christian. Bear with me for two seconds here. So it's roughly 2.25 million is what we're looking at at this point. There's been a strong escalation in in construction pricing over the past year, and so we've certainly seen prices shoot up. And there has been a really strong interest in many communities around Canada investing in their trail systems. So we've seen the contractors' workloads increase. So as a result, we're seeing prices increase as well.
Okay. Now, is do you envision this trail system? Is it one large track or is it several smaller ones that are either connected or independent of each other? It's 30 kilometers.
Certainly, we are looking at one overarching loop, but it's concentric kind of progressive loops. So the entire system will be connected together, but we are looking at a larger loop as part of our plan to extend visitation to two to three night stays. And over the long term, what we're hoping to do is connect that loop directly into the city core. So in theory, you know, you could be cycling up at Hiawatha, and there'll be a trail sign that'll point an arrow and said, you know, this way to downtown. So it'll increase the ability for people to actually stay, you know, even in the downtown core, utilize the hub trail to get up to the the mountain bike trail network and, you know, overall increase the tourism spend in the community.
Thank you. One final question. I know it's early in the process, but is there any goal or plan as to when this whole system could be completed? I know it's obviously contingent upon funding, but what's the hope?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Christian. I mean, ideally, you know, if all the funding comes together, then we would look at, you know, knock on wood, we'd look at completing it in 2023. You know, there's obviously, you know, a lot of variables up in the air. And if we were to, you know, receive the full amount, we try to hit the ground running as quickly as possible.
No, I just, and that was, those are the extent of my questions. I do support this initiative. I think there's a real market for this, and I think it blends well with the the marketing of Sioux-Saint Marie and what we're trying to provide, not only to our own people, but to visitors and future residents of Sioux-Saint Marie. So good luck with it. Thank you. That's it for me, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else in 710? Just will support Counselor Christian's comments on that. I agree with them completely. Oh, sorry. Didn't get to do that. Counselor Bruni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And a question to Travis, in the financial implications, I do understand the cycling infrastructure, but can you expand on the general product development? And also, how much money will be divided between the two, infrastructure and development?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Bruni. So right now, we have $7,000 allocated for general projects. So right now, we have seven thousand dollars allocated for general projects. You know, that could be items such as programming at the Bondar Pavilion for tour boats when they come in. You know, we've also got projects that are coming forward, you know, in terms of some potential marketing that we could invest in. It's a lower dollar, you know, some amount, so we're just looking at some smaller projects there. We did not allocate all of it to. The cycling infrastructure because we were trying to match a total of seven hundred thousand and. You know, that seven thousand dollars, we just wanted to keep for potential projects, smaller scale projects that come about.
Okay, thank you. That accounts for Brady. Okay, anybody else in seven-ten? You only had the one matter, Counselor Christian, so I'm going to go to Counselor Nero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question for Mr. Romeo.
On which matter?
Seven point one-six, the miscellaneous report, miscellaneous resurfacing program.
So Mr. Romeo is available. Before he answers the question, whatever happens to be, I'm just going to stop here and congratulate. Him for 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 his recent, I guess we can call it a promotion. He is our new Don Elliott. Although, you know, we don't expect you to be anybody but Carl Romeo, but congratulations for that, Carl. Well earned. And I'm sure you'll serve the city well over your career here, so good luck with it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Romeo, your report on the road resurfacing program. I believe the total in that report is three point eight-two-six million dollars this year. What amount does that increase over last year's amount?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Counselor Nero, I believe last year's resurfacing program was two point eight million, approximately.
So about a million, million dollars over, and that is all regarding the Nord's. Funds and the OSIF top-up, correct?
Through Mr. Mayor to Counselor Nero, yeah, there was a little bit of the the OSIF top-up money that we got earlier this year. Sent to diverted to paving as well as the four hundred thousand annual amount for the next five years for Nord's. Which is the Northern Ontario Resource Development Support Fund, I believe.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, my next next question kind of incorporates seven point one-seven and seven point one-eight together as well. If there's any other questions on this one specifically, I can defer to that.
Okay, so let's just see if anybody else has anything on seven point one-six before you move on. Are you on seven point one-six, Counselor Bruni? Okay.
Thank you to Carl. Regarding the OCIF funding and the Nord's funding. Is this the first time that we've received it? For this fiscal year?
Mr. Mayor to Counselor Bruni. This is the first year of the of the added OSIF and Nord's, yes.
And the Nord's, we will be receiving that for the next four more years?
Four more years.
Or both?
Five years total.
I'm sorry, it's five years, but also the OCIF, are we receiving that for the next five years or just the Nord's?
I believe the added OSIF is two point two million per year for the next five years. Less of that has gone to this paving program, but.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, on six, on seven point one-six, Counselor, go ahead. So we need Counselor Du Force, Mike, please. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. Romeo. Mr. Romeo, if. Counsel so desired and they wanted to increase the road resurfacing program amounts. What in staff's opinion would be the most effective financial way to do that? Would that be with an incremental increase predictably added in every year or just simply with one-time top-ups whenever we can?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Counselor Du Force. Absolutely incrementally at budget time. So we knew exactly what we were doing and had time to properly plan for it as well as. Where it gets out into the private sector and the private sector is able to tool up and man up and be able to actually do the work. In the, before winter.
Okay, so just to be clear, one of the main reasons that that incremental method would be better is in order for the actual capacity of construction companies to absorb that extra work. Is that, is that correct?
Um, there's a lot that goes into a paving program. There's our own staff. We need to provide estimates to put together drawings, tender documents. There's surveying that is required. So there's a bit there. We would have a hard time if there was a, if it was a single, a large, single increase to the program. We would may have a hard time administering that that work, but yes, as well to the private sector. Just to be, just to be sure that they have the staff and the resources available to. To to bid on that type of work and get it done in a reasonable amount of time. Along with the rest of the work that's happening through the province and the private sector as well.
Okay, thanks very much.
Okay, so is that it for you? Anybody else in seven point one-six? Oh, so Counsel, go ahead. So I have two over here. Okay, we'll start with Counselor Hollingsworth and Counselor Vazwell.
Thank you, through your worship to Mr. Parva. First of all, congratulations on your new appointment. Can you just remind us and the people that are viewing? How you came to the conclusion of suggesting these roads for resurfacing?
Mr. Mayor to Counselor Hollingsworth, through our previous method of asset management. We have, we evaluate all of our main arteries and, as it says in the report, the Class A, Class B, Class C, Class D roads. On an annual basis and they're scored and. Through that and basically how these major arteries behave at any given winter, some of them may rise to the top. So we generally assess them thoroughly in the spring, but we have, we have an asset management program that that prioritizes that for us. We are currently in the process of doing a new asset management plan, which will be done later this year, which will be a little bit different. A little more sophisticated in prioritizing these needs.
Okay, thank you. So it sounds like in the future you will report back to us on the new approach. In the future on how you categorize and how you assess. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Vazwell. I apologize, Counselor Vazwell. I'm not used to looking over there when I'm looking for counselors.
I mean, the cheap seats in the back and I'm short.
I'll put you down too. Same thing applies to Counselor Scott. Like, it's not. Seven years of not doing that, it's, I'm not.
No, it's, it's okay. It's fine. I can always shout. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Romeo, could you please tell us the approximate? Time from a resurfacing of one road to when it needs to be resurfaced again, especially with major arteries? Like, is the, does it, does it, is it five years, ten years? Like, how long, once it's resurfaced, does it, does it maintain to a better service level?
Mr. Mayor to Counselor Vazwell. So, so a well-constructed new arterial road. We would expect to get fifteen to twenty years out of a surface before it was needing some maintenance in resurfacing. So after fifteen years, we're looking at them possibly resurfacing like a road like, like say Wellington Street East.
That's well-used. Perfect. And then in terms of cost, thank you for the answers to my questions earlier today. So approximately one kilometer of resurfacing costs one point two million? I just want to confirm that with you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Counselor Vazwell. Yes, I just took the the estimate amount.
Yeah.
The amounts from the arterial roads we did this year and divided by the kilometers. So, yeah, we're like, oh, one, just over a million dollars per kilometer.
Per kilometer for resurfacing.
Depend on if it's a four-lane road, a five-lane road or a three-lane road, it would be, but for, for a, a good rule of thumb, I guess, you're just over a million per kilometer of arterial road.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much. I don't have any further questions.
Counselor Scott, did you have questions on this? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Romeo. It's a question based on the scoring, actually. So when you were talking about the scoring, I don't know if you'll know the answer and forgive me for not asking you sooner. It didn't come up. How many roads were near the top but just missed out maybe on a point or however you're scoring? Like, do you guys keep track of top, I don't know, ninety-eighth percentile or something like that? I don't know how you guys look at it.
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Counselor Scott. You're right, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but I. The way we currently rate them is we would rate a road in the worst condition as deficient now. And I believe we've thrown some, some numbers around, there's, there was two hundred or so road sections that were in that category. So, and not all arterial, some, some will be local and collector roads too, but that gives you an idea of the magnitude of the deficient now roads. The new way to score roads going forward is going to be a little bit different. We're using pavement condition index, which is more commonly used. Pavement rating for municipality.
Is the scoring of the roads, is that standardized across Ontario?
I wouldn't say it's standardized, but the way we're moving towards is a more common way to do it. We, we had an in-house method of, of a couple of engineers driving the roads and, and categorizing them, a number out of a hundred. Which, which fit them into the deficient now, one to five-year, needing reconstruction, six to ten. And then adequate.
So are there some set guidelines that are put out by maybe like the MTO or somebody?
There, there are guidelines, yes.
Yeah, okay.
This is, this is why we're doing the asset management plan to be a little more consistent with the rest of the province.
Do those guidelines include like a threshold for when a road should be considered? Or is that something that's just based up each individual municipality?
They'll, they'll get a pavement condition index based on pavement condition that will fit them in, fit it into. It'll be a score that will, you know, rank them numerically. But it is, it is difficult to look at in our, in our climate. Adjust on where they fit from the year before or the last time you drove the roads or scored the roads because they behave so differently over a winter. So based on freeze-thaw cycles or, like, if you have a winter where you have many, like, plus degree, a plus zero degree temperatures. And then drop down again many, many times, that's hard on a road for, for potholes and the surface deterioration. So that's why we still will have a good, good, long look at them in the spring. We won't commit to, to setting the program until this time of year when we can really see how they behave.
I appreciate the answer. Sorry, I thought of them on the fly. Normally, I would have given you a heads up. It's a good first meeting for you, right? Final question, just offhand, and once again, I apologize. Roughly, how many arterial road, like, how many kilometers of arterial road do we have? Do you know something, Fall Park?
Uh, sorry. Also Scott, I, I don't. I can give you that information.
No worries. I don't mean to catch you off, just things I thought of as other counselors were asking questions. So I appreciate that. All good. I'll reach out to you after. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else on seven point one-six? Counselor Nero, seven point one-seven, seven point one-eight. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Romeo, we spoke this morning regarding our capital budget summary for two thousand twenty-two. Specifically, the, the portion that is attributed to roads. And I, I thought it was important to, to really dive into that and get a good idea. For our viewers of what's really going to happen this summer as far as roadwork is concerned. And. Through our conversation, once we backed some numbers out, we came out with fifteen point six million. On reconstruction and resurfacing of roads this year, correct?
It's Mary to Counselor Nero, yes, that, that was the number. We looked at the overall capital transportation program. As well as the additional OSIF top-up money and the Nord's and, and took out the, call it, non-road related items. Like, although bridges and aqueducts are road features, we took those out of, out of the, the total. As well as some line items in that for next year's engineering. Came at around fifteen and a half million, approximately fifteen point six, as you say.
Counselor Nero, I'm just gonna, sorry, pause you there. I apologize. When I came back to you, I hadn't realized it, but the clerk just pointed out to me that we're. Five thirty-five and planning, we're in the planning. We have two planning matters, so we have to get to them. So we'll pick it up. I'll come right back to you when we're done. Thank you. So we do have two planning matters tonight, counsel, and we do have participants that are, that are here on the planning matter, so we're gonna have to move to the planning agenda.
So Agenda Item eight point seven point one, A three twenty-two Z O P. With respect to one eighty-nine Upton Road and ten thirty-five Wellington Street East Design Evangelical Lutheran Church. It is actually a motion by counselors Nero and Shoemaker resolved that the report of the planner dated May two, twenty twenty-two concerning official plan and rezoning application. A three twenty-two Z O B B received and that council postponed this application to May twenty-four, twenty twenty-two.
Mr. McConnell, I'm going to start with you. Is there anything you want to, to address about this matter? Because I recognize it's being a postponement, but some context would be helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quite briefly, this is the Zion Lutheran Church on Wellington and Upton Road. When the original notice went out, the legal description did not match the map. And it wasn't consistent with what the church actually wanted to rezone. So we have issued notice again, and this matter will be heard at the next council meeting.
Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have the applicant available today?
And not on this application.
Okay, so we had anybody that asked to speak, you know, opposition?
Not with respect to this.
Okay, counsel, so, so we have no one here to speak in favor of it or against it. You've heard that there's going to be postponement of it. You have any questions, you're welcome to ask it. If not, we have the vote up on East Scribe. Any questions, counsel? Seeing none all in favor? Okay, you can just cash your vote on East Scribe. I don't, clerk, you can confirm when you have.
And I have a unanimous vote.
That brings us to eight point seven point two.
Eight point seven point two, A four twenty-two Z O P five twenty-two Allen Side Road. I need a seconder as Counselor Shoemaker has declared.
Counselor, Counselor Christian, Counselor Hollingsworth, fine.
A four twenty-two Z O P five twenty-two Allen Side Road. A motion by Counselors Bruni and Hollingsworth resolved that the report of the planner dated May two, twenty twenty-two concerning official plan. And rezoning application A four twenty-two Z be received and that council redesignate the southern seventy-four meters of five twenty-two Allen Side Road. From rural area to industrial on land use schedule C of the official plan by approving official plan amendment number two thirty-eight. Rezone the southern seventy-four meters of five twenty-two Allen's side road from rural area zone RA to light industrial zone. With special exception two ninety-one-two, in addition to the uses permitted in a light industrial zone. Permit the manufacturer and assembly of solar panels, prohibit the following uses, contractors yard, delivery and courier services, dry cleaning and laundry plants. Manufacturing of food and beverages, rental and leasing and warehousing, wholesaling and distribution centers. And that the southern seventy-four meters of five twenty-two Allen's side road be deemed subject to site plan control. As per section forty-one of the Planning Act and that the legal department be requested to prepare the necessary bylaws to effect the same.
Mr. McConnell, I'm going to start with you. Could you give counsel and the folks watching at home a, a summary of this application, please?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. This is the southern part of a rather large block of property. That is immediately north of the Helene Solar Panel Manufacturing Facility on Allen's Side Road. The southern portion has been severed off and the plan is to merge it with the Helene property. The application before council tonight is to amend the official plan and zoning bylaw so that. They would have the industrial zoning in place over all of, all of the Helene property. My understanding is there are no immediate plans for expansion at that facility, but this would put in place. All of the approvals that are necessary for them to expand if they get to that state. Both Mr. Nakarado and Mr. Cesario are here tonight as the applicant and the applicant's agent. And I should say, our council staff is recommending this for approval.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. McConnell. Madam Clerk, could Deputy Clerk, do we have anybody registered to speak in opposition of the application?
We do not.
And in favor of the application, we have the applicant. It's also, Mr. Nakarado, welcome to council. Do you, as the agent or the applicant, want to make any representations on this application? Mr. Nakarado, you're on mute. If you could just unmute yourself.
Okay, there you go. I'm unmuted now.
Well, I think you have two people that are, that are currently have microphones on in this meeting because you got a lot of feedback there.
Okay.
Okay, it's good. I think you're good now. Go ahead.
Okay, good. Okay, sorry, can you repeat the question?
I'm just asking if you, as the agent for the applicant, or if the applicant itself has any representations that they want to make with respect to the application.
Uh, no, we're, we're, we're good.
Okay, counsel, do you have any questions for either the applicant or for Mr. McConnell or other city staff? Seeing none, we can have a vote on the application all in favor. Thank you for your time tonight, gentlemen. Your application is approved.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. That, that should be the extent of the planning agenda, Madam Clerk.
That is correct.
Yes, we'll go back to Councilor Nero, and I think you're on seven one.
I'm sorry, that passed nine zero.
That passed nine zero, yeah. So seven, seven one seven and seven one eight. Go ahead, Councilor Nero.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. So Mister Romeo, um, our capital works budget. Um, I guess w- we backed some things off, but out of a total in our whole capital budget of thirty-eight point six million, we ended up with, uh, approximately fifteen point six million just towards roadwork this year, correct?
Mister Mayor, to Councilor Nero, yes.
And does that, does that amount also um, include pothole filling? Or is that a separate line for public works?
Uh, no, that would be, uh, under the maintenance budget of public works.
So it's in the re, it's, it's not part of this number?
It is not.
Okay, do, do we have an idea of what that number is? I neglected to ask you that this morning. Okay, that doesn't matter. Thank you. Is there somebody gonna answer?
Well, I, I see that Larry Girardi is just lying on.
Did you want to add to that, uh, Mister Girardi?
Uh, certainly, Mister Mayor. Through Mister Mayor to, uh, councillor Nero, uh, we spend approximately six hundred and sixty thousand in our winter control budget uh, for doing, uh, pothole repairs. And then we swing over to our asphalt budget for our summer programs where we do all the shimming and, uh, we take certain sections of the road that are bad and do repairs, whatever doesn't fall under our capital budget with engineering, and that's another two million.
So that's two point six, six million on top of the fifteen point six.
That's correct.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mister Girardi.
Uh, thank you for that clarification. Um, I think, Mister Mayor, if I could, I think it would just make sense if we kind of, instead of kilometers of streets that we're doing, I just want a list of streets that are on this year's project list. Um, for reconstruction, we have Cedar Street, Dufferin Street, Angelina Avenue, Blur Street West. We have trunk road under the connecting link program. Under the resurfacing program, we have McNabb Street from pine to lake. We have St. George's Avenue from John to Birch. We have Wellington West from Lines Avenue to Henrietta, and we have Second Line West from Third Avenue to Edison. It's a pretty, a pretty healthy program for, for this year, that's for sure. Um, now, on top of the, uh, we're talking fifteen point six that we talked about, we're talking an additional two point six six from, um, public works on the summer and spring pothole and resurfacing program. There is, if we do nothing to this budget next year for two thousand and twenty-three, automatically through OCF and the Nords program, we are adding two point six million, correct, to next year's program? Because we get that funding for the next five years.
The two point two, for sure.
Two point two in the, in the Nords is, uh, is for the next five years as well.
Yeah.
Through you, Mister Mayor, to councillor Nero, that we did add the Nords in the, in the number, in the fifteen point six, but, but yes, there would be the.
Oh, okay, even if we back out the four hundred thousand from that roughly, we're at eighteen million, we're still gonna add two point two million next year.
That's correct.
And ongoing
Correct, yeah.
For subsequent years, even if we don't add anything to our budget in increases in levy or anything like that.
That's correct.
And I, I just wanted to make that point that, you know, we're, we're over almost half of our total capital works budget in road resurfacing. Now, you know, I believe that we, we can always do more. But I think the question was asked by councillor Dufour. It, logistically, can we do more in two thousand and twenty-two? And I, and I believe the answer we received was that there would be some pre-planning that would have to happen both for our planning staff or for our engineering staff and for the contractors who would have to take this work on. I don't believe that it would be just that simple to add three to four to five million dollars to a capital works project, pro- program for, for roads and be able to just add that to two thousand and twenty-three or two thousand and twenty-four. Am I correct in those comments, Mister, Mister Romeo?
Um, it, through you, Mister Mayor, councillor Nero, it would be difficult at this moment right now to add five million dollars to the, to this year's program.
But if we pre-planned it, you, we could certainly do it. If council were to increase their budget coming up, it's automatically increased right now. We know that by two point two million, and even if council was to add some more for two thousand and twenty-three, you certainly could plan for that.
Certainly adding to the, to the roads program during budget time is, is preferred. So we could properly plan for it and make sure the contractors are aware as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mister Romeo. Thank you, Mister Mayor, for that latitude.
Is that for seven seventeen and seven eighteen?
Yeah, that's together.
Yeah, that's all right. Anybody else have any comments in seven seventeen, seventeen, two, councillor Rooney?
Just to go back, uh, regarding councillor Nero's questions. So to Carl, Carl, if we prepare this year for next year, if we wanted to spend five million dollars as councillor Nero has, has, has mentioned extra for road repairs, can that be accommodated?
Uh, through you, Mister Mayor, to councillor Rooney. Um, I would say, yes, we could, we could add, uh, add the, that would be near the, near the top end of, of the capacity, but we, we would have to probably assign some work to private consultants to help with tender preparation and all that, because we likely wouldn't have to stop in-house, but we could do our best to get that done, yeah.
Okay, um, I, I guess a question to Mister Girardi, since he's brought it up, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars for ri- a winter repair. So the winter repair would be just basically cold asphalt filling in potholes temporarily. Then you have the two million dollars for, would we say proper repair? Um, maybe you can explain.
You, Mister Mayor, to councillor Rooney, what happens with that two million dollars is, as you know, throughout the year, there's sewer laterals that are done. We'll do those repairs. There may be certain sections of a roadway that engineering can't get to, an intersection, what have you. That's what that funding will go for. The pothole, uh, six hundred and sixty thousand that we're using in our winter control right now is, uh, money that we're using anytime, uh, beginning in February when they start appearing, depending on how many freeze thaws you have. Uh, and that's what we use to first put cold mix in, and there may be the opportunities where we're going back again because it didn't stay in due to the weather conditions. And as Carl had mentioned, the freeze thaw has been, uh, just nasty, especially this past year. So it's done a lot of damage to our roads that way. So that's what that funding is for. It's to do, uh, patching throughout the summer. It's to do, uh, repair the surface of the road where laterals were done by the city, of course, and, uh, for doing, uh, pothole patching and, uh, repairs, uh, through, to the potholes that have come up through, uh, the past winter.
So Carl said one million dollars for one kilometer of roadway. So if we have two million dollars for repair, we're not doing a, a complete of kilo- I'm sorry, a kilometer?
Yeah, yeah, they're not, yeah, the repair isn't necessarily the full kilometer of roadway.
Well, the one million dollars is for one kilometer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's what he stated.
If you're gonna resurface a road.
So for street repairs, two million dollars, a lot can be done, correct?
I see. Through you, Mister Mayor, to councillor Rooney. Remember, we're doing projects throughout the city and several patches, yes. So we're, whatever we have in funding is used to purchase asphalt and, uh, and to put that, that material down and the cost to put it down.
One last question, since we're on asphalt. Uh, are we starting to patch up holes with the hot asphalt?
Uh, great news. We just got, uh, notice that the asphalt plants are gonna be opening. We're hoping to have one uh, this week, uh, as early as the dry days that we expect, uh, later in this week, we should be using hot asphalt, and it's really good news for us because, uh, uh, you could do so much with recycle and with, uh, coal patch, but we, we really are looking forward to getting the hot, hot mix, which we should have this week.
I thank Mister Mayor for allowing me to just kind of go off topic for a bit. It's the first, it's the first time I've done it. Yeah. Now, uh, back, back to Mister Girardi, are we gonna do a blitz on potholes? Uh, like several crews going out or like in each ward? I, I'm just asking.
So councillor Rooney here, just let me, let me do this, uh, cause maybe this will get us to where we're going. I think it's, I, I, I get where you're going. I also get where you were going. So that's why there's so much latitude is, I think part of what we want the community to know is we understand the concerns about potholes. We hear them. We're spending more on road resurfacing this year than we did last year, than we did the year before. So we're spending more on this. I think councillor Nero, you want people to know that. And councillor Rooney, you also want people to know that part of our inability to fix potholes is we need the, the material that we now have access to. So, uh, Mister Girardi, maybe, uh, we will deviate here for a second because this is a concern that's been raised with a lot of us. And maybe you could take a minute and just explain to the community, uh, the timing on that and what we need and the fact that you now have access to it. So there'll be an immediate program to get out there and address some of these concerns.
Through you, Mister Mayor, we are certainly excited to be moving forward on this, and we do have a campaign planned. And as soon as we get the material, we'll have all the teams out there working on it. We have one team still working on sweeping, so I have to continue on with that. But all our other forces, for the most part, unless they're doing emergency laterals, will be working on getting these potholes done. So that's been our push for the last while. We've actually had extra crews out uh, on weekends when we could get them and when we can get material. And, uh, we were using our hot asphalt that we were recycling at the time. But yes, uh, the community should be aware that we will be out there. Please watch out for our crews. Give them the room that they need to do their work, uh, but we plan on, uh, getting at it fairly quick.
Okay, so you do have access now to hot asphalt from other asphalt plants in the community?
Yes, we do.
Okay, councillor Rooney, uh?
No, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Okay, so we're, we're, we're done, seven seventeen and seven eighteen, unless anybody else has questions about those? Okay, uh, seeing none, councillor Nero, did you have anything else on consent?
No, Mister Mayor, thank you.
Okay, I, I do have you councillor Rooney, but I had councillor Gardy first, so I'm gonna go to councillor Gardy, and then I'm gonna come to you councillor. Councillor Gardy, it's, it's, uh, up to you now, and so long as you don't talk about asphalt or potholes, you'll have a lot of latitude.
What about gravel, Mister? I'm just kidding. Um, we'll, we'll go to, um, um, seven point one four, please, first, Mister Mayor. I'd like to call attention to a couple of things on the agenda that I think it's important the community to aware.
Seven point one four, Two Billion Trees Program Application.
Thanks, Mister Mayor, um, excuse me. Um, uh, it's great to see the staff submitted an application to the program, um, through you, Mister Mayor, to, to Emily Cormier. Emily, I was, I was hoping you could please describe the project and how, how, um, the committee envisages it, um, um, benefiting the community, especially as it relates to, uh, climate change and the climate crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Through you, Mister Mayor, to councillor Gardy. Absolutely. Um, so maybe just, I'll, I'll backtrack a bit to the funding specifically. Um, so the Two Billion Trees Program, um, was launched by the government of Canada, the federal government in twenty nineteen. And this is part of their commitment to looking at, um, broader nature-based climate solutions, specifically with the goal of achieving carbon sequestration. Um, so that is, uh, what we looked at when we were looking at this funding. Um, it has two streams. One is specifically for tree planting. Um, the other is for capacity building. Um, we decided to pursue the capacity building stream uh, specifically because, um, it, it funds up to one hundred percent of project costs, but also because we just didn't have, uh, the capacity to plant the minimum, which is ten thousand trees. Um, but equally as important to planting trees is, um, understanding where to plant them. So taking a targeted approach, but also measuring, um, the, the impact of those trees. Not only from where do we plant them, what are other places that we should plant them? Um, not only from an aesthetic standpoint, but also from an equality standpoint, perhaps there's neighborhoods within the community, um, that, uh, have less of them, et cetera. So specifically, the funding that we've applied for is to do an urban tree canopy and land analysis study. And so this will allow us to have a baseline to measure how much our tree canopy is right now. It will provide us with a percentage of our cup, of our canopy cover, and it will allow us to, um, develop a target and measure our growth, um, in the future.
That's great. Uh, thanks, Emily. Um, Mister Mayor, just, I'll, I'll let you see if there's anybody else.
Anybody else in seven one four, councillor Shoemaker, go ahead.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Through you, um, to Mister Girardi, if he's available. Um, Mister Girardi, sorry, I, I, uh, didn't, uh, ask you this in advance, so you may not know the answer, but I know this year, um, there was, uh, approximately, I think, eighteen thousand dollars left from the Green Initiatives Fund that, uh, is allowing our public work staff to plant an extra one hundred trees. Um, but do you know what the capacity of our park staff to plant additional trees is beyond that? Like, could they do another three hundred, another five hundred?
Uh, through you, Mister Mayor, to councillor Shoemaker. Certainly, we could increase our capacity a little, but to give you the total limits, uh, that would be difficult at this time because I don't know all the other, uh, commitments that we have made. If you're looking specifically for this year, I, I would have to review that with the team to see, but, uh, uh, whenever there's an opportunity to get more trees and more trees to plant, we certainly do our best to do it. So to give you that exact number right now, I, I don't think I could do that.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else on seven point one four? Thank you for your work on that, Emily. So councillor, uh, Gardy, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I'm gonna go to Emily one more time through you, Mister Mayor, um, about seven point one five, uh, the invasive species center workshop.
Go ahead.
So real quickly, I just think it's another great opportunity for the public, and I'm glad that, uh, the environmental sustainability, uh, committee supports, uh, the invasive species center's request. And, uh, again, I'm gonna ask you to shed some light, Emily, uh, on it a little, uh, give us a little background into the request, please, and, uh, thanks in advance for all the work you're doing on, uh, on things that can't be, that there aren't much more important, uh, dealing with climate change and, and sustainability in our community. Thanks.
Through you, uh, Mister Mayor, to councillor Gardy. Absolutely. Um, I'm happy to provide a summary of the application. Um, so for context, the Invasive Species Center applied to the CDF, Community Development Fund Green Initiatives Program to put forth a workshop. It's a full day workshop, and it has two, it has two key parts. In the morning, it will focus on education and awareness specifically to aquatic invasive species. And in the afternoon, um, that part of the workshop will focus more on, um, invasive plants and also the importance of biodiversity. Uh, they plan to partner with the Sault Ste. Marie Public Library and take it as an opportunity to highlight and showcase on the biodiversity garden, which brings awareness to native plants in northern Ontario. Um, workshop attendees will also be provided with a native seeds package with regards to seeds that are native to northern Ontario. They'll also receive a two-year-old red maple tree seedling that they can go and plant, which will contribute, uh, to further, uh, carbon sequestration in our community. They've budgeted for thirty trees, so, um, that's an additional thirty trees that will be planted within our community. Um, so this, this is a great initiative, you know, it brings awareness not only to, um, you know, the importance of early and rapid detection when it comes to invasive species. Um, the report does a great job by the Invasive Species Center speaking to the cost savings that arise when it comes to early and rapid detection. Um, but it also brings the importance of pollinators, our local pollinators, the importance of biodiversity, as well as, um, you know, the long-term event, uh, benefits from tree planting, including energy efficiency and carbon sequestration. So all in all, a, a great project, hitting up all three pillars, actually, of the, um, Green Initiatives Fund.
That's great. Thanks, Emily. Thanks, Mister Mayor.
Can anybody else on that agenda item? Thank you, councillor Gardy. Thank you, Emily. Uh, councillor Gardy, do you have any other matters?
I, I do not.
Councillor Rooney?
Just one, Mister Mayor. Everything else has been, uh, asked, uh, regarding the agenda seven point six, wide area network services. The, the RFP is for eighty-one thousand for five years. I was just kind of curious, what was the cost of the last contract that we had? Through you, um, Mister Mayor, to councillor Rooney, the, uh, annual cost of the last contract was sixty-eight thousand four hundred dollars per year. So it's gone up slightly. Okay. I thank you.
Anybody else on that matter? Councillor Scott, go ahead.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, further to councillor Rooney's questions, um, was that for the same amount of locations? So it, here lists nineteen for this year. Was that for the same amount of locations? I guess that would be to Mister White.
Yeah, yeah. I'll, uh, defer this question to, uh, Mister Coach Emilio, who is here in the chambers.
Uh, through you, Mister Mayor, to councillor, uh, Scott. It covers the same, uh, amount, um, external uh, departments and areas. It does- It does, there is an increase in the uh, throughput or the bandwidth. Uh, we increased the bandwidth due to requirements of increasing that.
And further to that, uh, I'm assuming this all runs through cellular connections, right? Is that kind of how this works? Cell towers?
Uh, through you, Mr Mayor, councillor Scott, the infrastructure is through a, a citywide fiber network that is provided by the proponent.
Okay, good to know. Alright, so I think that was all my further questions on that. Thank you.
Anybody else on seven six? Councillor Bruni, that was the extent of your matters. Any other matters for consent council? Councillor Hollingsworth, go ahead.
Um, through you Worship, just a comment with regards to seven point two zero patio update, if I may.
Go ahead.
I just want to um, say to the staff, thank you for um, your report. And I just want to say that I'm happy that um, we're supporting our patios again. Um, it's been obviously a very long winter and it's been very long with COVID. So again, this is a wonderful, um, how can I say, report to say that we're helping out our patios, we're helping the downtown, we're helping our restaurants. So I look forward to um, seeing them open and look forward to all the community enjoying our patios again. Thank you. Well-written report.
Councillor Shoemaker, do you have other matters in the consent?
Yes, just one comment on seven point nine you're on, or here Worship, sorry.
I was gonna speak to that matter, but I'll, I'll, I'll let you get ahead of me on that.
It is uh, just uh, drawing the attention of the community to, to a, a great economic uh, development news in, in our city. Uh, if uh, you know, it, it's uh, somewhat ironic, if we had a company moving here from down south or establishing for the first time, bringing seventy-five jobs to the Sioux, uh, we'd be having a parade. But when our own companies do it, uh, it comes on the council report and, and barely gets noticed. Uh, but it is excellent news that Teneris is uh, you know, uh, this expansion is uh, is in the final throes here of uh, of coming online. And it's gonna mean goods, good things for our community for uh, years ahead.
Yep. So thank you for those comments councillor Shoemaker. I, I did wanna draw attention to seven nine. I think Teneris has made, made a very significant additional commitment to our community uh, in this move, uh, and in, in reinforcing its operations here. They're making very significant capital improvements to their facilities. Uh, and uh, and we're gonna see, you know, a tremendous amount of activity. Uh, on top of the activity at Algo Mount, we don't wanna leave set of some of the really great activity at some of the other companies. And Teneris is a great example of that. They're a good community partner. They've always been great to work with and they're really committed to our community. And it's nice to see uh, them investing significantly in their facility. So I wanna recognize that, uh, and thank them for those investments and uh, and just publicly acknowledge that we appreciate that. We appreciate that the economy that's being developed and the jobs that's being created. So that is it for the consent agenda then, I believe, unless you have anything else councillor? Okay, madam clerk?
I will read the consent motion. It's a motion by councillors Nero and Hillsinger, resolved that all the items listed under date May two, twenty twenty-two, Agenda Item seven, Consent Agenda Save and Accept Agenda Item seven point one one, be approved as recommended.
All in favor? Motion is carried. That brings us to seven.
Seven point one one was accepted because there is an amending motion. I'll read the main motion and then I will read the uh, proposed amendment.
Okay.
The main motion is by councillors Bruni and Shoemaker, resolved that the reported the Director of Tourism and Community Development dated May two, twenty twenty-two, concerning Sioux Lock Tours Inc. Tourist Development Fund Application be received and that the recommendation of the Tourism Sault Ste. Marie Board of Directors to allocate twenty-five thousand dollars per year for five years be approved. Further, that first year dock rental fee of five thousand nine hundred sixty dollars be waived and a rate of five thousand dollars be established for dock rental for Sioux Lock Tours Inc. annually thereafter. The amending motion is moved by councillor Scott, seconded by councillor Bruni. And that is resolved that the following words be deleted, the recommendation of the Tourism Sault Ste. Marie Board of Directors to allocate twenty-five thousand dollars per year for five years be approved, further that first year dock rental fee of fifty-nine sixty be waived and a rate of five thousand be established for dock rental for Sioux Lock Tours Inc. annually thereafter. So those words deleted and replaced with the following, a one-year pilot project for Sioux Lock Tours Inc. allocating twenty-five thousand dollars for that year, with staff to report back on the results of the pilot with the option for council to decide at that time on allocating an additional twenty-five thousand dollars per year for four additional years.
Okay, so the, the effect then of the amending motion would be to, to limit the, the uh, the recommendation from five years at twenty-five thousand, which is a hundred and twenty-five thousand, to twenty-five thousand, and to remove the waiving of the dockage fee. So, so we have a mover and a seconder that we're gonna start with the amending motion. The amending motion passes and that's the motion before us. If the amending motion fails, then we go back to the main motion. So uh, we, we have the mover and seconder for that councillor Scott moved it, councillor Bruni seconded it. Uh, councillor, do we have any questions, uh, comments on the amending motion? Go ahead councillor.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Uh, this is, uh, I'm not sure who this is too, but uh, through you to uh, either Malcolm or Travis. Um, the Tourism Development Fund, uh, and the money coming out of that, is that money that uh, comes directly from the city tax levy?
Uh, I, I can answer that, Mr Mayor. So through you, Mr Mayor, to uh, councillor Dufour, uh, no, it is not. Uh, the funds are collected from hotel night stays. There's a four percent uh, flow-through tax, uh, that's collected uh, from hotel nights, from visitors that are visiting our community and staying at hotels. And those funds are set aside in the Tourism Development Fund for use for um, either tourism marketing or in the example in front of us, uh, tourism product development.
Okay, and uh, just to refresh my memory, Travis, uh, the, this resolution that we have here from the Tourism Development Board, um, who sits on that board? Is it people who have expertise in, in tourism?
Through you, Mr Mayor, to councillor Dufour, yes. It's uh, a combination, I mean collectively, it's a group of tourism professionals. Uh, we've got a, a number of uh, hoteliers as well as other individuals that uh, work in the tourism sector. Um, they're well-versed, they're well-experienced and have a good sense of uh, market trends and uh, where they feel like growth in the tourism uh, industry can be.
Okay, thanks. And my final question, as I see here in the resolution, um, that uh, that passed the Tourism Development Board, so I assume they must uh, certainly support it. Um, there's an allusion here to an application for both federal and provincial governmental funding uh, to be submitted on behalf of this project. Uh, is it reasonable to assume that um, you know, a multi-year commitment from the Tourism Development Board is part of what's being uh, hoped to be leveraged here to garner uh, additional dollars uh, into the community?
Through you, uh, through you, Mr Mayor, to councillor Dufour, yes, that's correct.
So what would be the effect if city council um, decided to overrule the tourism professionals and only commit one year of funding? Um, do we expect that that would then decrease federal and provincial funding coming to the city?
I think there's a couple of risks. Uh, one, uh, certainly the proponent is uh, um, you know, looking for support to bring this initiative forward. Uh, the, the proposal itself is not a slam dunk. Um, you know, certainly they're looking uh, for support from the community and specifically from funds from the Tourism Development Corporation. And uh, to your second point there, yes, absolutely, it would erode uh, the funding that would be available for matching funds for um, various grants.
Okay, sorry, one last final question, Mr Mayor. Suppose that um, we approve this funding and then after year one, two or three, for whatever reason, the service didn't run, what would happen to this uh, Tourism Development Funds?
Uh, through you, Mr Mayor, to councillor Dufour, the uh, the funds would cease and uh, we would no longer fund the operation on a go-forward basis.
Okay, so they would be made available once again to the Tourism Development Experts to re-recommend uh, further projects?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks very much.
Councillor Christian?
Sir, you asked three of the questions I had, believe it or not, but I do have one question and I wanna direct it to uh, the mover uh, of the amendment, uh, councillor Scott, I think.
Yes.
Uh, so councillor Scott and perhaps councillor Bruni, you're asking for a pilot project, and I hate to put you on the spot, but how do you envision determining uh, whether the pilot is successful or not? And the reason why I ask that question is I'm wondering how close your expectations are to perhaps uh, Mr Anderson's and the committee in terms of determining whether uh, you know, the, the tour, the, the tour boat deserves additional funding in years, uh, years going forward.
Go ahead councillor Scott.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Through you, Mr Mayor, to councillor uh, Christian. I think that would be for the next council to determine. Uh, that was part of my, my thoughts on, on phrasing it the way I was is uh, I appreciate that committing to something for five years that, that has potential like this, especially when the document is telling us, the report is telling us that it has an estimated economic impact of over nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars annually. Um, I suppose if the new council next year, when we get the report back, sees that it did realize the nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars, then they could determine whether or not that would be a success.
Um, I have a follow-up.
Okay, and councillor, councillor Bruni, sorry to answer the question also.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Through you to councillor Christian. I, I think that would be up to Mr Anderson to report back to council that if they had a s- successful year, they come to council and uh, apply for the twenty-five thousand dollars again. Um, so Mr Anderson would report to council. You, thanks, thanks gentlemen. Uh, through you to Mr Anderson. Uh, is there, having said all that, is there any mechanism in place, given that this is a multi-year commitment that you're asking for? Is there any mechanism that essentially treats what you need to do, much like this amendment is, in that you have to look year over year, or do we simply approve it? And short of them shutting down, they continue to get the money?
Uh, through you, Mr Mayor, to councillor Christian. Um, in terms of uh, uh, reporting, uh, we are anticipating an annual report from them. I know that uh, uh, the Board of Tourism Sault Ste. Marie has requested to see um, their annual financial reports. Um, so that is uh, you know, there are a few mechanisms there that we'll be able to look at as well as the ridership. Um, the one thing that I will say uh, about investments in product development is the return's not always immediate. Uh, these are longer-term investments, um, you know, that takes a while to get the message out there in terms of uh, both the marketing and the direct return on investment in terms of visitation. Um, and it is something that we uh, will be looking at, uh, linking directly to the tour, or to the tour train in terms of added product. But that will um, that may not uh, demonstrate the exact returns uh, immediately, like any other product that we would invest in.
Thank you. That's it for me. Um, count, sorry councillor Bruni, I had a couple of questions. Mr Anderson, when, when this proposal was put to the tourism, uh, our tourism, Sault Ste. Marie Tourism Board for the Tourism Development Fund, I, I'm assuming that, that staff reviewed the business plan and the investments that, that the private sector partner was making?
That, that is correct. And the uh, I'll state that the Tourism Board itself reviewed the business plan.
Yeah. And you know, I'm not sure if this is public knowledge, I didn't see it in the report, so I'm not asking you to say if it isn't, but if it is a matter that can be shared, what's the magnitude of, of the investment private sector partners?
Uh, through you, Mr Mayor, um, to Mr Mayor, uh, I would have to uh, again, I'm, I'm, we shared that report in confidence. Um, so.
Well, I don't, I don't want you to share that if, if it's not appropriate to share. Look, I, I, I've got, I've got just a couple of comments here. I really don't have any more questions. I can say to council, uh, and to the mover and seconder, I'm not comfortable uh, taking a recommendation from the Tourism Board who I think have a much greater expertise with respect than we do. Uh, and, and, and shortening it based on a private sector business plan that I think needs some runway to get going. Uh, it's clear if you look at the resolution that was passed at the Sault Ste. Marie Tourism Board that uh, it's an annual contribution and it's limited in the sense that if something goes, if, if the endeavor stops, the money isn't flowing out. I think it is relatively speaking, considering the private sector investment that's gonna be required to get this operation off the ground, a reasonable and modest investment on our part. And look, we wanna see these activities on our waterfront. We wanna see an increase in tourism. And we have these structures in place uh, for a reason. That's not to say that we aren't uh, authorized to make a decision when we don't think something should go forward. We certainly are. I just don't see the basis for it here at all. And, and I wanna express my support for the board, uh, for their expertise, and I wanna thank them for the work they did on this. And I also don't wanna overlook staff who I think we can all agree has done some really good work and brought us some really good work on the tourism side. Uh, and uh, I, I trust our staff to assess these things. Tourism Board thinks this is the right thing to do and Mr Anderson, uh, who is here in his capacity as our employee, thinks this is the right thing to do. I, I certainly uh, am fully inclined to support it and I wouldn't be inclined to abridge it uh, the, the way that it's suggested by the motion. So I mean, if there are any other questions or comments by, by council, we can have those and then we can go to the more councillor Hollingsworth.
Uh, thank you. Through you Worship, to Mr Anderson. Um, for the viewers at home and for our friends in the media, can you just give us a two-sentence summary? Um, I believe that some constituents think that this is another lock tour, but it's more than just some people jumping the boat and looking at locks. Can you just elaborate more about what this really is going to do for our community? Um, not just for visitors, but our current um, community.
Uh, through you, Mr Mayor, to councillor Hollingsworth, um, yes, it is a, a multifaceted offering. Um, you know, as you stated, there is a, a lock tour component. Uh, they are also looking at uh, a dining component and uh, having the vessel available for um, private parties and other uh, social events that individuals want to uh, to leverage. Um, and I apologize, I can't recall who uh, had mentioned it, but I mean, I think when you look at this vessel overall and what it's doing for the waterfront and for the local businesses, uh, not only in the waterfront, but also um, you know, across the community in terms of service and repair, uh, food services, uh, as well as bringing more people through the downtown. It's got a broad uh, economic impact and I think one that's very valuable for this community.
Okay, thank you. And I just wanna emphasize, I think what you just stated is it's broad. And so I've just felt it's important for our um, residents or community to fully understand that this is more than just a boat. It's huge benefits economically. So I just thank you for your explanation, Mr Anderson. And I, I really think that's valuable information that you just provided. Thank you. That's all.
Councillor Bruni, you wanted to speak to the amending motion?
Just a qu- quick question through you to Mr Anderson. Mr Anderson, so if they receive the twenty-five thousand dollars, when do they receive it? Say at the beginning of spring, um, prior to the business, well, I guess the business will be operating three sixty-five, but when you provide this, do you get the financial statements before and you say, okay, uh, it, it looks, it looks stable, the business, we're gonna give him, grant him the second twenty-five thousand dollars?
Uh, through you, Mr Mayor, to councillor Bruni, uh, we would accept uh, um, invoices from uh, from the tour boat, similar to uh, what we've done for every other uh, Community Development Fund application, uh, where they demonstrate that the funds have been spent. Uh, and then they'll submit their claims, we'll review them and ensure that uh, the money has been spent appropriately.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. So councillor Nero hasn't spoken to this yet, then I'll come to you councillor Scott.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My, my questions actually were preempted by your comments because those were exactly the questions that I had from Mr Anderson. In terms of what percentage the twenty-five thousand dollars made up of their business plan, and I guess I understand that maybe those aren't numbers we should be talking about here. But I trust that our Board of Directors for Tourism, um, since we put them there and they are a reflection of the tourism industry for Sault Ste. Marie, that they made the right decision. I'm not certainly gonna support it. I will not be supporting the amending resolution.
Councillor Scott?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I actually have a question on the matter first. Uh, through you, Mr Mayor, to Mr Anderson. I don't see anything in the report about environmental, and I know that tour boats are usually high up on the bad-for-the-environment scale. Uh, was the environmental impact on our Great Lakes and our surrounding water and everything along that goes with that, was that taken into an account when this was put forward to the Tourism Board? I know we wanna push that we're uh, green-friendly and eco-friendly, and I know that this generally doesn't bode well with that.
Uh, through you, Mr Mayor, um, to councillor Scott, I, I apologize, but I'd have to um, ask you for more information relative to your concerns around environmental. I, I appreciate that, you know, there have been concerns with tour boats around whale watching. I appreciate that, you know, there have been concerns with tour boats around whale watching out in the West and East Coast, but I'm not familiar with the concerns in the Great Lakes.
Generally, just the concerns are that they're not eco-friendly. The way that their engines are that burn, it's just like a cruise ship in the sense that they're just usually not good for the environment in the sense of the emissions, in addition to the disturbance of any wildlife as well.
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Counselor Scott. No, we did not look at the emissions output of the tour boat. And in terms of interactions with wildlife, you know, all I can say is that the vessel's operating in quite a busy industrial, at times, industrial-at-times, waterway. You know, I'm down on the bottom floor here of City Hall, and I probably see about a half a dozen, if not more, tour boats from the Michigan side coming by my office every day. So obviously, there's a fair amount of activity, you know, between that and the larger freighters that are going through the locks. So, you know, I wouldn't be able to directly comment on to the impacts to wildlife, but I would imagine they would be minimal.
Thank you. I was just curious because I didn't see it mentioned, and I know that that's been something that's been on our radar. So I appreciate the answers, and I'm just going to go with one final statement if I can, Mr. Mayor, just on it. I don't want this to come off, this amending motion, like I'm not supporting businesses, because I very much am. I've always been supporting any business as long as it's come across this council. I just didn't really feel comfortable with locking up funds on a future council, given the fact that we are in an election year. I can appreciate that it's 25,000, it's more available. It's just something I didn't really feel comfortable with, and especially for something that's being pitched as going to be wildly successful. I felt that they could do without the guarantee for the remaining four years until the next council decides that. So that was my thoughts behind the amending motion. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll have a vote on the amending motion. All in favor of the amending motion? Counsel Bruny and Counsel Scott opposed to the amending motion? The remainder. So Madam Clerk, if you could just confirm that in the scrab. I think it failed two to nine.
That is correct.
That brings us back to the main motion. Counsel, any questions on the main motion? We call the vote on the main motion. All in favor of the main motion? Opposed to the main motion? Main motion carries nine to two.
And that is, that is correct, nine to two.
That brings us to item eight, section eight of our agenda.
So under Agenda Item 8.3.1, the Downtown Plaza update. The motion is by Counselors Nero and Hillsinger, resolved that the report of the Deputy CIO, Community Development and Enterprise Services dated May 2, 2022, concerning Downtown Plaza update received, and that council authorized an allocation of up to $1,318,569 from the Canada Community Building Fund funding to support plaza construction. And Tom Baer, the Deputy CIO, Community Development and Enterprise Services, has a presentation.
Mr. Baer, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to present to council on the Downtown Plaza project. Madison, if you could advance to the next slide, please. So two tenders were received for the Downtown Plaza project. It closed on April 7, and we had two bids received. The low bid was from Avery Construction at $8.7 million plus applicable HST. So this was over the budget established for the project. It wasn't unexpected, given the current cost escalations we're seeing in supply chain, fuel, labor in other projects in the community. Next slide, please. Staff have been working with Avery Construction and also our consultants with Brooke McElroy and their sub consultants to look at value management opportunities as per our procurement policy. And the team has identified potential savings of almost $200,000. This would be things like replacing the materials for a metal fence to a wood fence, a roof decking alternative, squaring the corners on the bleachers, adjustments to electrical services, lighting control systems, speaker system substitution. So you can see that the team dove into it to try and identify any opportunities to save money and bring it back better in line with our previous budget. Next slide, please. On a positive note, we have had good news on the fundraising front since we last presented to council in September. So since that time, we've had an additional $277,160 that have been committed to the plaza. A hundred thousand of that is in-kind support, and the remainder, $177,160, is a cash contribution. This brings the total fundraising for the plaza to over $1.23 million. When we initially talked about the plaza project, we had a goal of 400,000. We had increased that to 600,000. And as you can see, we're able to overdouble the amount of support for the plaza project. And we definitely want to thank all the sponsors and the donors to the plaza for their generous support of this community project. Next slide, please. So when we look at taking the value management options and also the additional funding and fundraising since September, that leaves an overage of $1.3 million. We essentially looked at two main options. A, reduce the scope and scale of the plaza project, and then B, continue with the project as tendered, accepting the cost reductions. Next slide, please. For option A, significant work was done, if council will recall, when we did some value management exercises with Brooke McElroy previously to bring the project in line. And we got the plaza project down to what we thought were the essential components for the plaza to maintain all the different activation elements and maintain the vision of that plaza. Also, most of the major components of the plaza have had sponsorship allocated. When we think of things like the fountain and rink from Rotary, the stage and screen, and we'll have an announcement on the sponsor there upcoming, and also the play structure from Sumel. Next slide, please. Option B, when we looked at how we could make up the $1.3 million overage, the city does currently have unallocated Canada Community Building funding of $2.2 million. So this funding would be sufficient to cover the West End Splash Pad project and also the additional plaza costs, and we would have a remaining balance of almost $300,000 that could be spent on other projects. Next slide, please. As a reminder for council and general public about the plaza project and what's included within the scope of the project, I'll just quickly go through a few slides of the project. So this is an overhead view, obviously, of the plaza. We've kind of divided it into the upper and lower room. Upper being closer to Queen Street and the lower room with the stage and screen and the mobile retail units on the bottom half. Next slide. So the plaza will include, or is proposed to include, a ice skating rink in the winter that will have compressors that will ensure that we have ice from November to March, and it will be a place for activating the plaza during the winter months and another rink in the community that people can enjoy in the downtown core. Also, one of the reasons we wanted to go with the compressors is that although we've had a couple of good winters the last few years with ice, we've had many winters where we've had warmer weather, and we've had a very limited number of ice days at our outdoor rinks. So this will provide a facility for people to enjoy and ensure we have ice during the winter months. Next slide. Also, we'll have a water fountain, which will be a great feature for activation in the warmer months. It'll be a place where children can play in the water, people can sit and enjoy the fountain and the lighting that goes with that, and a best practice recommendation for plazas that we've seen from other communities. Next slide. Also, the new plaza building will be erected, which will have a skate change area. It will have public washrooms, an office for a staff person, and the Zamboni garage. And this building in itself will be a nice addition to the Queen Street streetscape, an attractive building along the front of the plaza along Queen Street. Next slide. Now, this is just an overhead view of the plaza building, and you see, you know, the washrooms, the skate change area, and the different equipment rooms within the facility. Next slide. Also, we'll have the stage, structure, and screen. And so we see this is a great opportunity to activate the plaza, local performances of a smaller nature, highlighting our talented artists in the community, as well the screen providing the opportunity for things like movie nights, sports events, video productions to take place in the plaza. Next slide. There'll be lots of areas for people to sit and enjoy the plaza and gather on a casual basis, and an opportunity for a gathering place within the downtown core. Next slide. We'll also have a play structure and play panels for children in the community to enjoy the plaza in a place where families can come and sit, allow them to go and play using these new features and enjoy the plaza as a family. Next slide. There'll be lots of planting and trees, again, an attractive park-like environment within the downtown core, something that's been looked at and requested over previous years. Next slide. And another key feature is the lighting that we will include in the plaza. This will provide great ambiance for the plaza venue. We also have the ability to project images on the ice surface or the gathering area in the upper room, which will provide a neat way to animate the plaza for different events and occasions. Next slide. And of course, there's lots of passive activation elements to the plaza where people can come down and enjoy it. But one of the things that we're excited about is utilizing the plaza for all kinds of different community events. Staff are busy working on the downtown activation resolution that council passed not too long ago. And certainly, having a plaza in place and the options that it brings, brings a lot of excitement to the staff at the potential for different events that we can run with partners in the downtown core. Next slide. So the staff recommendation would be to utilize the Canada Community Building Fund to cover the overage for the project. Certainly, we recognize this is a significant amount of money, and it wasn't a decision or recommendation we took lightly. But we think it's important to continue to see this project through. It's a priority project for our downtown revitalization, and the approach results in no levy impact or additional debt for the project construction. Next slide, please. One of the comments we've received from members of the public has been related to road infrastructure, and appreciate the discussion that council had earlier tonight related to the roadwork that is planned for this year. And so we wanted to point out that the city has received additional funding to assist with road infrastructure through the OSIF program, the NORDS program, and the Connecting Link. So that's a total of $4.7 million in additional funding in 2022 for road infrastructure. And also, some of that funding does apply, as was discussed earlier, over the five-year of that, of those funding programs, the next five years. Next slide, please. Another item we wanted to mention was that we had originally approved $28.8 million for the Twin Pad Arena. Obviously, we received the contribution from the Province of Ontario of $18 million, which helped to reduce the city's share of the Twin Pad project. The interest savings were estimated to be approximately $9.4 million from that funding that we received for the project. So it certainly has left the city in a solid financial position. We were in one previously, but even a better position as it relates to our debt position. And again, no additional debt would be required if we utilized the CCBF funding to cover the overage on the plaza. Next slide. So for a total budget for the plaza project, the construction will be approximately $9.5 million. There were two properties that the city did acquire early on in the project, two assets the city now owns. And that brings the total for the project approximately $10.1 million. When we look at the funding sources for the plaza project, the external support is approximately $7.3 million for the project. When you look at the one-time gas tax top-up in 2019 and the CCBF top-up allocation funds. Also important to note that we have been approved, as reported to council previously, for $500,000 from FedNOR, $250,000 from OMAFRA, and then obviously, we have our sponsorship funding as well. Next slide, please. So for next steps, we are seeking council approval tonight to award the tender to Avery Construction. The construction would begin as soon as possible, and the estimate is approximately 37 weeks to complete the project, which would take us into January 2023. Next slide. So I got an updated number today from the BIA on the entire business number in the downtown core, and it's over 470 businesses, so more businesses that were included on this slide. In the last 11 years, over $121 million has been taken out in building permits in the downtown core. And we believe that city leadership in advancing the desired change that we want to see through investment in the public realm and programming will play an important role. And the city leadership in taking, doing its part, sorry, for advancing the downtown is important to achieve the goals that we all want to see in downtown Sault Ste. Marie. Next slide. And this is part of a strategic plan. There's a thoughtful, strategic approach that's been taken to developing the downtown. And that includes the work that was done previously on Bay Street. We're looking at Queen Street streetscaping in 2023, the Spring Street Wooner Project connecting the waterfront to the downtown. We've had the Marina upgrade projects, both with the new docks, the Boardwalk project extension that's been approved with FedNOR funding, the installation of the kayak docks. We're looking at the downtown plaza, obviously. And then also the next project, which is the Mill Market relocation, which will have a lot of synergies with the downtown plaza. Next slide. There's no question that downtown is a priority. It's a primary way that economic development happens in a community. When you look at businesses, looking at the health of the community, potential employees, looking at relocating to a community, students coming to Sault Ste. Marie and our youth deciding to stay, quality of life and the health of a downtown is really important in those decisions. Next slide, please. And that's likely why council identified the downtown and the corporate strategic plan and noted that we're striving to create a vibrant and attractive downtown. And also, why it was identified time and again when we did the community consultations with Future SSM. There was a lot of dialogue, a lot of outreach done, and certainly, the downtown was identified as a priority, and our revitalization efforts critical to the community going forward. Next slide. It is something that has been proven in other cities. You know, there's lots of research that looks at best practices and downtown revitalization and successes that other communities have had in their downtowns. And also, when we brought Roger Brooks to Sault Ste. Marie, who was an expert, this was one of the recommendations he had for helping to revitalize the community and having a plaza that's close to your commercial district as close as possible was one of the key recommendations in establishing downtown plazas. Next slide. Another thing I thought it was worth mentioning is that, you know, when we did the Future SSM strategy and when we've talked to newcomers and people moving to Sault Ste. Marie, some of them expressed some difficulty integrating into the community. And, you know, while it's not a silver bullet, we certainly feel that having a downtown plaza that allows us to host a diversity of community events, showcase different cultural groups in the community, and provide an opportunity for citizens of Sault Ste. Marie to come together, socialize, have fun, meet each other. This is an important part of community building and a benefit of the downtown plaza. Next slide. So in summary, we are taking a thoughtful, strategic approach for downtown revitalization based on research best practices and expert recommendation. Obviously, that change we want to see doesn't come without hard work, collaboration, and investment. And, you know, we are seeing success in our downtown as evidenced by the numbers for the building permits. We've had two restaurants just open last week in downtown Sault Ste. Marie. So it's exciting to see that change coming, and I think we need to continue that momentum to see the end goal, which is, as we've talked about before, increased residential density, more businesses in the downtown, and increasing the vibrancy of that downtown. The next thing is that, you know, Sault Ste. Marie should be confident in its future and invest in itself and the quality of life we have for citizens. We talked earlier in this meeting about Teneris and the significant investments they're making. Obviously, Algoa Steel is making generational investments in the. Obviously, Algoa Steel is making generational investments in the mill right now. OLG and Plato just the other week announced 100 job openings in Sault Ste. Marie. So there's lots of reasons to be optimistic about the future of Sault Ste. Marie. And I think investing in this plaza project again helps us to continue that momentum. And finally, we have the ability to do this. Certainly, the city continues to exercise financial prudence and has the resources at hand to execute these important projects. So thank you for the opportunity to talk further on the downtown plaza and happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Counselor, before I get to questions, and I saw your hand first, so I'll come to you first, counselor. There are, actually, can you put that deck back up again? I do want to, I do want to draw attention to the public. I think council's probably gone through the whole deck, right? Do you want it to draw attention to the public? So I don't know who has control of the deck. Is that you, Madison? Tom has an appendix on here, and I think it's important, and I'd ask the public to take some time, if you're interested in this, to take a look at this, because one of the things that I think we have lost sight of, and this is directly related to a comment I received recently in the Chamber of Commerce event that I did. I do a luncheon, the mayor, I shouldn't say I, but the mayor does a luncheon every year at the Chamber of Commerce. Counselor Bruny, Counselor Hillsinger attended that this year. It was virtual. But one of the comments that came up, it was about questions we received, it was about the plaza. It was a local business person who has a business downtown. And what they had said was they really loved the idea, but they were anxious about, you know, communicating that because they didn't want, you know, to be subject to kind of negativity on social media. But one of the constructive comments that that person made was that you're really not communicating well what you're actually doing. And I thanked him for the comment, and I believed that he was right. And we had a follow-up after that with staff, and I said, you know, one of the things that we're losing sight of is the type of work you're doing and how long you've been doing. We didn't just decide to take an empty parking lot and turn it into something. This was years of work, and if you look at the report tonight, there's a consultative report that's on there that shows what we were doing. But this goes back to future Sault Ste. Marie. And it was years of work, and it's been here, I think, a dozen times. I don't have the final count. I asked Malcolm. He didn't get it to me, and him and I didn't speak, but it's been here at least nine to 12 times in one way or the other. And, and the reason why is because this is a holistic plan to invest in our downtown, and the plaza is just one part of that. And I think these images kind of, if you look at from slide 33 on, so if we can go to slide 33, I'd encourage the general public to take a look at these images. So if you look at slide 33, you see one of our first steps, which was Bay Street and improving Bay Street.
Just gonna give that.
Do you have the consultation summary or the PowerPoint?
No, Tom's deck. I'm on Tom's deck, and I think it'd be good. Tom stopped his presentation before he went through this, and I think he just spared us, us all of it, because we're obviously looking at it, but I think it's worth the general public seeing. So if you, if you look at, so this was, so this is an image of what we did on Bay Street. And if you recall, when we were doing this on Bay Street, we heard a lot of people say to us, you really shouldn't do that on Bay Street, and there was some negativity about it. Then we did it, and there was a lot of positivity about it, because that's part of what we're doing here. And so if you look at the next slide, Queen Street, there is a plan, and the community should know that, to invest in Queen Street and redevelop Queen Street. We were hoping to get Queen Street done during this council term, but for a number of reasons, some COVID-related, some not. It's on the books for 2023. Malcolm, am I correct about that? Are we still have it on the books for 2023?
Yes, right now it's scheduled for then pending budget approval. Next year, the design work is being done now.
So, so we have Queen Street, and there's some really great images here. The next slide shows you some more images of that. I think the next slide shows you some more images of that. And this is one I'm really, you can skip to the next slide. I'm really personally excited about is Spring Street. And creating, you know, I went to law school in Halifax, a lot of people know that. There's, they never called it a Wunnerf, because that's a Dutch word, I think, but there's, there's one of these streets in Halifax, and I remember it being full of people and how much fun people had down there. And I hope the next council moves forward with this project. And I'll be very earnest with you. One of the only kind of things that makes me anxious about not carrying through for a third term is not seeing this work carry through, because it is really great work that's been done over a number of years, that's thoughtful, and staff has put a lot of time in. There's been a lot of community consultation. But there's a few slides here about Spring Street and how we would activate Spring Street and what we would do to Spring Street, and I think it's, it's, it's exciting. I think it would really make a difference in our downtown. And then you can just skip through all the Spring Street slides, because I want to show them, everybody, what I want to do is point out to the community that this work is being done, and this is a holistic plan. And, you know, it will take, you know, a commitment, an ongoing commitment to get it done, because it is a staged project. And if you look at the Bondur upgrades, we've done that, but we're now, and we've, we've allocated, we've got resources for this, we've got some funding for this. We're bringing the boardwalk around right up through the Marina to the base of Spring Street. So it all, go to the next one, and it will, the plaza will be on top of that essentially. So it all connects, and this is, this next piece, I think, is mission critical. And this council, I want to commend it, so if you can flip again, please. Has made steps to make this happen. And if you think about the thousands of people that go to the Mill Market on a Saturday, if you think about bringing those people to the heart of our downtown, to the hundreds of those business people that have invested in our downtown, it's, to me, going to be, this is key to the whole plaza project. And so I want the community to recognize that this is more than us taking a parking lot, saying we're going to build something on. This was years of staff and council work and planning and development to do something that really could have a very significant impact. And all I would do, and, you know, if you can believe it, I have my comments, saving my comments for the end, but all I would do is, this isn't it. No, I got a lot more to say about this, because I think it's that important. And this is, all this to do is I want to say to the community, please go look at this. Please go look at the work that's been done. Please go look at Tom's whole deck and go right through to the end of it. Because then I want you to see that it is something that is part of a larger plan. So based on just drawing the people's attention to those slides, I won't say anything else about them. What I'll do is I'll take questions now from, from council, and I told Counselor Hollingsworth I would start with her, and I will start with her. I will come to you next, Counselor Christian.
Thank you. Through your worship, first, those were well-said words, if I may say, well summarized. Through your worship to Mr. Ver. You mentioned in your presentation, not just tonight, but many times, that you have been actively going for sponsorship. You've been actively looking for donations, I believe. And tonight you gave us an update on our sponsorship. Are you still currently actively going for more donations?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth, yes, we do still have dialogue ongoing with different corporations about donations to the plaza and ways they can support it.
Okay, and if you continue to be successful and receive more donations, obviously, you'll accept them. How will that impact the budget?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth. We are looking for approval to advance the project and award the tender tonight. So I would look at it that any new support or contributions for the plaza could go towards either amenity improvements or programming or other ways that we can enhance the plaza project moving forward.
Okay, just a couple more questions. When you talk about these sponsorships and donations, you're basically saying that businesses, individuals, and so forth are personally taking money from their own sources and giving it to this project because they believe in this project. When you look at all the businesses that have already invested into this project, I think that sends a strong message to the community that many people want this particular plaza. One question more about donations. Have we done such an active donation campaign before?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth. Certainly, since I've been with the city, I would believe this is the most, you know, proactive campaign that we've had for a municipal-related project. Obviously, there's been things in the community related to other, you know, the hospital or, you know, different community amenities. But certainly, this is a significant outreach effort that we had for the plaza.
Okay, so it sounds like this is speaking huge volumes, these donations. Having said that, it brings me to your next question. I believe in your presentation, you said that the city technically has invested or will be putting about $3 million of its own money into this project. Is that correct?
2.85.
Okay, and so the city is not putting the whole budget in. They're putting in this dollar amount. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth, that's correct. So we've basically utilized budgeted expenditures, so the community growth initiative's line item in our budget, and our property reserve will make up the, the city's contributions for the project.
Okay, I think that point is very important, because many constituents have reached out to myself feel that we are actually putting the entire bill, which we're not. And so I just want to emphasize that to those that are watching tonight's counseling, that there is a smaller portion that we are putting up, but look at how much money is being put into this from donations and other sources. My other question is with regards to constituents that have reached out to me over the last few weeks have two main concerns, safety and also homelessness addiction. In fact, many people are concerned that this is going to attract the wrong audience. Tom, Mr. Ver, can you please use this time to help educate our constituents? How this is going to basically help our community? How is this going to basically create a safe environment for our downtown? Can you just comment on homelessness addiction and what we as a city have already done for these very important issues? We have done a lot of work already in these areas.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth, a few things to mention on this topic. I think to start, we have the community safety pilot that council has approved. So we do have the patrols happening with N1 security during night, but also the downtown ambassador program is set to begin with the CMHA in the coming week. And so that is a pilot program that we have started that will help to address some of the safety concerns in the downtown. The other thing I would mention is that, you know, when you look at a lot of best practices from other communities, you know, one of the ways to increase safety is obviously to have more eyes, more people, more foot traffic in the downtown area. And as we see traffic start to return, I think it's important to recognize that we've come out of a period of, you know, COVID lockdown and pandemic restrictions that has limited the number of people that are frequenting downtown. We're starting to see them come back, which is great. We talked earlier tonight about the patios, which are coming back, which is fantastic. So as we see that foot traffic come back, and as we see more people in the downtown, that safety factor and the comfort level certainly increases. And, you know, this is something that the plaza is going to help with when you look at animating events and activities and people generally coming down to take advantage of the market and spending their time in the downtown core.
Okay, thank you. And again, those are very important point. And just one last comment with regards to homelessness, addiction and safety. We as a community, we as council have been working very hard on these issues. And I just wanted to give some shout out to the DSA board, to the chair, Mr. or Counselor Dufour. We have been working very hard on these critical issues. So I do support the downtown plaza because it, we have to make sure that those businesses that have already invested into the downtown, we just gave out that award to IDA as one example tonight. We have put skin in the game ourselves. And so I support this, and I do have further comments, but that's all my questions for now. Thank you.
Counselor Christian.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any questions. I do have comments, so if you'll indulge me, a few things I'd like to say. It's an important topic, so I'll step out of my customary role of being quiet most of the time.
Okay, please.
Anyway, I, listen, I've said it before, and I'm going to say it again. This, this project is needed for our community, and it's certainly needed for the downtown. It, we can't reiterate that enough. And I made this comment before, in the 1960s, the council of the day had the foresight and wisdom and the vision to redevelop the waterfront. Many of you are too young to remember, but it was, it was an industrial wasteland. And it took a real commitment on council and the city's part to revitalize that. And I can't imagine what that area would look like today if we hadn't have done that, right? So there's always a level of skepticism, concern. No change, please. No change, please. But we did it, and people, generations have enjoyed the boardwalk and walking along the riverfront. As a matter of fact, in 2014, the Canadian Urban Institute, which most people don't know, awarded our downtown redevelopment, or our, sorry, our waterfront redevelopment with their Brownie Award, recognizing what a great job we did. And I don't think most people know that. So we should take a lot of pride in that. Bay Street, same way. We heard negativity, you know, it's going to be difficult to get out of Greyhound games, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm sure it slowed things down, but I haven't heard one negative comment. The mayor made the point. It's nothing but positive. So you, you have to have some vision. You have to have some commitment to growing the community, and I think that's important. Yeah, I know we have problems. Everybody on council knows that we have other issues. And I've had, I've had people come to me and raise them, just like Counselor Hollingsworth has. We're going to attract the wrong person down there. Except that every article I've read by an expert and every thing I've heard from an expert says the opposite. You have to invest in these areas in order to get the type of vibrant, active area that you want. This is actually going to help solve some problems, right? Some of this, this feedback I'm getting unfortunately is a little misguided or misunderstood. Roads is another one. Well, we have to put it towards roads. Roads, I think it's, you know, council made it abundantly clear that we hear the public, and there's going to be a plan to continue to invest in our roads, and it's coming, right? We can't just throw money at it. Mr. Ramil said it takes planning, but we hear you and we're doing it. Taxes is another one. Why are you spending money on this when our taxes are so high? Our tax rates are too high. What does that mean? Our tax rates are too, I'm not sure, but I pay a lot of tax. Sure, we all pay taxes. Nobody likes paying taxes. But the fact of the matter is, of all the five major communities in Northern Ontario, our taxes on a single detached bungalow are the lowest in Northern Ontario. We're $400 less, sorry, $300 less than Sudbury. Timmins pays $4,400 for a single detached. We pay 32. And we're $300 lower than, than the provincial average. So for all of these reasons, and the mayor tried to point this out, we're trying to dispel the facts or dispel the inaccuracies and focus on the facts and the things that we need to deal with. Counselor Hollingsworth pointed out that there is support for this, this initiative. We see it. And the public, whether it's private money or businesses, have come forward, and they recognize the importance of it. I, listen, the amount of money, I've, I've expressed this. The amount bothers me, but any amount of money that, that we're spending bothers me. But how do you, you, the project has to go through, and I certainly don't want to lose it on, on hundreds, if not even a million dollars. It's still a project worth doing. I, I think that's, that's really, really important. If we want to attract people to our community, we have to invest in our community. We haven't done enough for the downtown yet. We have to revitalize it. Like the mayor said, it's part of a, a larger project, a larger vision, right? This isn't going to solve at all, but this is going to make a huge impact. Believe it or not, I don't have too much more to say, except, you know, I floated this idea out that if people have a problem with the little amount we're spending, because some of those dollars are earmarked for roads and transit, I don't have any problem pulling that money out and financing the project. We don't have a lot of debt in our, in this community. Our city council, this city council and city councils in the past have done an excellent job of managing our debt. We've shown exceptional financial stewardship. We could easily fund this, and somebody would We could easily fund this and somebody would argue, well, you know, if, if you, if you fund this, then, then, you know, you're just incurring that cost in, in debt. I realize that, but we're committing the money that would otherwise go to roads, to roads. So either way, in the future, we're likely going to have to borrow some more money, but that's not a big concern to me because I know that as a community, where I would argue that we're under indebted. We, we could spend more on our community. Per capita, we, we spend $100 per person per capita in Sault Ste. Marie on our debt. To Thunder Bay, $1,900. Sudbury has over $300 million in debt. There, they pay $1,500 per person for their debt financing. We spend $110. So when people use this argument that, you know, we're throwing away money and I'm worried about my taxes, even if we decided to finance this and I, and I want council to consider it and I'll wait for comments to come back, we could easily do it on this project and we could put the one-time gas tax, 25, 2.5 million in the CCBF fund money back into the kitty as a show of our support for those projects that those, those funds are generally used for. So I'm going to end my comments there, Mr. Mayor. I think we're in good shape. I think we have a lot of opportunities here. It's much needed in our community. I'm just hoping that people listening understand the facts, can, can see their way through the misinformation. And I, and I know that council, having spoken to several individuals, are going to do their best to try to dispel the rumors and try to lay out some serious facts, as I'm sure you will, when we come to a final decision on this.
Very good. Thank you, councillor Christian. Councillor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to keep it brief. I know some of us are looking forward to the Leafs game. I do have a question to Mr. Vera. I'm just wondering.
Councillor Scott, I apologize. We were, if, if we haven't missed it yet, I just want to tell anybody, if we're still on Shaw, you made me think of it. We're not on Shaw, we won't be on Shaw because of the Greyhound game. You can catch us on YouTube. So flip over to our YouTube channel and you can continue to follow there. So you made me think of it.
No worries. I'm glad I could prompt you on that one. It's the season. Mr. Vera, I'm just wondering, so I see the breakdown of donations. I thought we received more like, I recall a Sue Mill donation of 50,000, some other donations. Is that listed somewhere?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to councillor Scott. Yes, we do have in the report, we do have a breakdown of all the contributions that we've received so far. So Sue Mill did donate 50,000. What was in my presentation was just the donations since, since September, sorry. But in the council report, we do break them all down. It does total the 1.1 million dollars plus the 100,000 in kind, which brings us to over 1.2 million.
Great. Sorry, I completely missed the timeframe on that slide. That was my fault. Another question, so you did mention that 37 weeks would be the hope for the turnaround on the project. I know that in some industries, there's quite a bit of backorder on a lot of items, steel in particular. Have, have we done anything to secure what we need for that? Or is this 37 weeks including any possible material delay?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to councillor Scott. We believe that the 37 weeks has factored in the secure, the secure supply of all the different components of the plaza. One of the value management items that we did have with the, the roof trusses was in part, was a cost savings, but it was also in part related to supply chain issues to get that. So we have looked at that and we do think we're still on track with the 37 weeks in this environment.
Great. That's, that's actually pretty good. Thank you for that. And the next question, so if I'm understanding this right, the total project funding breakdown. So there's the one-time gas tax from 2019 of two and a half and CCBF total of just under 3 million. So that comes to, we'll say, just under five and a halfish. So am I correct in saying that roughly half of the total funding of the project is from funds that theoretically could have been used for roads?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to councillor Scott. That is correct. The eligible projects for the CCBF do include roads. And the one thing I would note is that both of the 2.5 million and that 2.9 million are one-time or top-up allocation. So we still have our regular CCBF funding that comes to the city. These were both kind of one-time funding allocations, I shouldn't say one-time, top-up allocations that came to the city outside of our regular allocation. So it is an opportunity when you have funds like that to take a look at, I believe, projects like the plaza that can help move the community forward. We traditionally have earmarked our CCBF funds towards roadwork. We got these two one-time allocations that allow us to look at other projects.
Thank you for that. I'm not sure I would get the support or a second, but I'd be willing to motion maybe even something similar to what councillor Christian was saying, if you would even wanted to motion it and I would second it, but potentially pulling the funding out and putting that toward roads. But depending on how the motion is formulated, I, I may not support where it goes from there, but I'll leave that to the other councillors. We'll figure that out as we all ask our questions. I would just like to end with a quick comment on the matter as it stands before us today. I won't be supporting it, depending on if there's an amending motion. Simply because of a few reasons, I think that when we look at our city as a whole and you compare it to a home and you have a crack foundation and you spend the money from fixing that crack foundation to pave your driveway instead, that's, that's how I'm kind of just comparing this project in my mind. I, I appreciate the idea that we all do know the roads are in rough condition. I don't know a single person who is opposed to the idea of the project of the plaza. Everybody I've spoken to thinks it's a great idea. And I would even be willing to tell you that I think it's a great idea as well. It's just that I get a little bit afraid with the cost and the timing and I, I'm aware that things get more expensive as we delay. I can appreciate that, but I've spoken to a lot of constituents and I did guaranteed them that this evening I wouldn't be supporting it as it is. Specifically in Ward five, a lot of the feedback I received was we don't have a single indoor or outdoor rink in the entire Ward five area. This would be adding another one to downtown. People see that, people get disappointed and ignored. And to me, that's what leads to certain things like petitions of people wanting to join Prince Township. So I, I guaranteed to my constituents that I would vote against it in its current form and I wanted to make their thoughts known on that. So thank you.
It's not remotely would lead to petition. People wanted to join Prince Township.
That was something that they specifically mentioned.
It's not even remotely analogous. So, so we, we don't have a list here. Oh, I do, sorry. I have councillor Vezelallan next. Sorry? Yeah, I have your on the list, yeah. I had my page turned over, so I didn't, I had on top the list, but I do have a list. I have councillor Vezelallan, councillor Nero, councillor Shoemaker, councillor Bruni, councillor Gardy, councillor Piffler. I think, well, I think it seems like we're doing them all right now. So like, I don't see a need to go through it again. With respect, councillor Christian, I think you said your piece. Councillor Scott, I think you, you said your piece. Councillor Hollingsworth, you said a lot of your piece when you're asking your questions. We probably won't go through it a second time.
Okay.
Councillor Vezelallan.
Okay, through you, Mayor to Mr. Vera. Mr. Vera, were any of the recommendations from Robert Brooks and the consultation based on the published document, the 2014 Downtown Dialogue and Action Research that was done over 2013?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to councillor Vezelallan. I can't confirm, we were trying to look into that. I can't confirm that Roger Brooks did look at that downtown dialogue report. Certainly in looking at the report, and it's exciting or reaffirming to see a number of the recommendations, recommendations that were made are items that we are actioning in the city now. And also some of them are items that the downtown plaza would help address through their recommendations as well.
Thank you, Mr. Vera. So I just want to address for a lot of the constituents and, and community members that are worried about crime in the area. So this was research that was done in 2013 through Sault Ste. Marie Police Services, John Howard Society and Nordic Research Institute. And it was funded by Northern Ontario Heritage Corporation, United Way Community Foundation's Endowment Fund and the Proceeds of Crime Grant. The city was involved in terms of the Community Committee on Graffiti. I was on that committee with then councillors, Susan Myers and Steve Butlin, as well as Public Works and a number of other community members. So based on that research, which was really about four pillars and three of those pillars were crime prevention, social development and downtown revitalization. Really much based on social disorder calls through Sault Ste. Marie Police Services. So one of the recommendations was, and this is directly from the, the research document, which is available on the Nordic Research Institute website. High number of social disorder calls to police demonstrate a need for change and indicate that the downtown area needs a longer-term comprehensive approach to crime prevention through social development. Further to that, social disorder and for those, social disorder are those, someone could be loitering, consuming drugs on property, perhaps, you know, they're homeless and they're, they're camping out somewhere, arguing, fighting, that, that sort of thing. So social disorder is best addressed by social interactions. So I just want to point out that this is action research based from 2013 where over a thousand community members were interviewed by teams as well as various service organizations. So the research is there. It's not just us saying we want a plaza. It's a, by addressing community need that we create an environment for people to thrive and have those social interactions and, and have pride in the community and have access to amenities such as the splash pad, such as the concert area, which I think it's really important to also point out. The majority of these activities are going to be free to the public. And as well, they're going to have much-needed facilities in our downtown such as public washrooms, which we're solely in need of. So I support this project 150%. This comes from my youth association days back in 09 and 2010, when all the youth wanted was a place to go downtown, hang safely and jam. And it's really wonderful to see that this research from 2013 that had an enormous impact and was very much quantitative research through police stats plus qualitative through service organizations dealing with crime prevention, that this project is coming to fruition. And I'm really proud of the team, Tom, and I support it and anything I suggest, I suggest everyone taking a look at that report because it's really what we really need in our community. And from a non, you know, social determinant of health perspective, it also will bring business. You take a look at the Port Arthur project in Thunder Bay, that was $22 million, just an investment from the city that has now gone into, I believe, 120 million, 120 million dollar project that has totally revitalized and changed the downtown of Thunder Bay. And there was just one antidote, if you, if you go on tourism, Thunder Bay, it was just one little, you know, quote from a mom saying, we love coming here in the summer because we go to the splash pad and we love coming here in the winter. And that's what we're going to have as well. It's going to bring in more restaurants, it's going to bring in residual business. And like the mayor said, you know, having the mill market there with those thousands and thousands of people, it's going to completely transform what we have. And I really want to, really want to bring home that while we're worried about crime, those folks are our community members and through our social interactions and activating the space and having those amenities for them to be able to enjoy, we're all going to enjoy them. It's going to make our community a much healthier place. So thanks, Tom and the team. This has been many, many years. And I wanted to put out all the work that was done back in 2013 that is still completely relevant today. So thank you.
Councillor Neil, thank you councillor Vezelallan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to have through you, Mr. Mayor, question to Mr. White. I guess I understand that Michelle won't be, she's not able to attend tonight, so maybe I can address this to Mr. White. Mr. White, through, through you, Mr. Mayor, would it, would it be on the point that councillor Christian raised? I have the same mind thinking as that regarding long-term debt. And I know it's late in the game, but maybe just for discussion purposes, would, would it be advantageous for us to finance this project, including, let's say, the Spring Street project, which we haven't even talked about, we know what it's going to look like. But it hasn't been estimated, I believe. Would it be advantageous for us to finance this total project through long-term debt? And is it something that staff already looked at when, you know, we've been, like the mayor suggested, staff has been working on this for at least three years? Has long-term debt ever come up? And the third part of the question would be, if it went to long-term debt, would some of the grant money, the funds that are in there, would it be able to be freed up to put towards other projects? For example, roads, which has been brought up. One comes to mind like our parks master plan, which council approved some, so a few years ago. And I think for the last two to three, two budgets anyways, the master plan asks for expenditures for three parks every year. And I don't think we've done any so far, except Anna Marinelli Park, which came through a specific motion. So that's my question. Where are we? If you, if we look at long-term debt, is, is it something that could have?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to councillor Nero. Regarding the question as far as utilizing long-term debt for the plaza project itself, certainly we look at these sorts of things due to the mix of funding for this particular project is probably not one of the better ones to utilize long-term debt for. You mentioned Spring Street and utilizing it for the whole project, including that. This year, we are doing the design work for the Queen's Street Pro, uh, part of the project, including the streetscaping that will go along with that, as well as the design work for the Spring Street Wooner. Once we get that information and start costing out what it looks like, it may be that portion of the project may be a candidate for long-term debt. We'll have to assess that once we get more information. As to the question about utilizing long-term debt for this project and then allowing some of that to go towards roads or linear infrastructure, what I can mention is staff is, will be looking at the potential of long-term debt and other financing to do a number of things as far as catching up for the community. One example I would note is the fleet services review that we had earlier in the year. If you recall that, we, review noted that we need to make a kind of a substantive jump to catch up to modernize our fleet and get so that we can utilize less the fleet overall that have a more modernized and, and really lower our repair bills. What you can look at and the studies we have underway this year will help finalize our thinking on this. You can look at utilizing long-term debt to do that catch-up. And then as that study noted, once you've done that catch-up, you do have resulting savings that you get and the savings are then utilized to pay down the debt that you've used for the catch-up as well as hopefully you would have additional savings that you can rely on it. Regarding roads and linear infrastructure themselves, as councils are aware, we're doing a study right now, asset management study on our linear infrastructure, which of course includes the roads and the services underneath the roads. That is a study will be complete this year and will inform us of the best way to go forward and the best mix of work to do, whether it's reconstruction, resurfacing, what have you. Once we see that information, along with the additional money that we noted that we're receiving for roadwork through the OSEP and Nord's top-up, as well as the investment we make now and as well as investments we may look at in the future incrementally building up the amount of money we look on roads. There may be a spot for long-term debt to be used for that as well in kind of the, the same sort of catch-up mode. So I, I think I've answered your question, but you can let me know if I haven't.
Absolutely, absolutely. Very, very significant amount of information in there. Thank you for that. Your answer probably took away a lot. Your answer probably took away a lot of the comments that I'm going to make, which is going to be repeating things that you just said. So all I could say, Mr. Mayor, is I believe it's very important for us to go ahead with this project to make the investment for our community. Like Counselor Christian had said earlier, I too, most likely with every counselor at the table tonight, have heard the same complaints about the project, which relate mostly to roadwork because incidentally, we're at that time of the year when our roads are at their worst and it's on top of everybody's mind. And we've also heard about taxes being increased and we're doing a project like this. Hopefully it came out tonight that this was not a levy increase and was not part of our increase in taxes this year. The way that it has been financed in tonight's presentation. As far as the roads are concerned, I'm not going to repeat everything we talked about tonight. We are spending a significant amount on roads. We heard that there is an automatic increase of $2.6 million automatically without the subsequent council increasing the road budget anymore. There still is, just from the grants that we're receiving subsequent to this year. And I, and I totally agree. We have to look at ways of doing more roadwork. We do. But I would not agree with anybody that says that we have been ignoring our roads. I think that we have been approving a significant part of our budget towards that work. But even so, we, you know, roads are, are what they are. We need to do that work, but we can't forget the overall vibrancy of our community. You know, everybody, everywhere you look, communities are investing in their downtowns. And we've been talking about this for a very long time. Not just last term or this term, a long time. The question comes up every election. What we're going to do for downtown. Well, staff together with council came up with something what we're going to do, and I think it's definitely time to do it. Mr. Ver's report spoke to everything we've done so far, you know, around the downtown area. And Mr. Mayor, you pointed out very well, you know, exactly what those, those projects were and ongoing. We're talking about the projects that are tied to this one, Queen Street, the Spring Street tying it to the boardwalk, the new section of boardwalk going in, and this is all tied together. It's part of a bigger plan. So, you know, in the final analysis, like, I think we all know that we know we need safe roads and good roads to, to travel on. But at the end of the day, we need roads that have to lead somewhere. We have to go somewhere with these roads. So these projects are important and I think this project itself came in obviously significantly higher than we expected, but I think it's doable. So I'm going to support it.
Thanks, Counselor Nero. I have Counselor Shoemaker next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just picking up on a comment, Mr. Bear made in response to, I think it was Counselor Hollingsworth. Mr. Bear, you mentioned the amount that the city's putting into this is 2.8 million. I think you meant from our own budget. But I just want to find the slide. I had it open. My, my program crashed here. So there is 2.5 million from the 2019 gas tax top-up. That is money that the city could allocate however it wanted to infrastructure. Am I correct about that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker, correct. Within there's a kind of, I think there's 18 eligible categories within the CCBF. Road infrastructure being one of those. That's correct.
And there is also 2.964 million that from the 2020 CCBF that likewise the city could allocate within those categories. Am I correct about that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker. That's correct.
So of the 2.8 that you talk about that we have put in on our own, there's 2.7 million from our own budget and 110,000 from a reserve, but really that 5.5 million from the gas tax, we could allocate elsewhere.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker. That's correct. I think the distinction we were trying to make, because we, we felt there maybe was some confusion that, you know, the, the contribution from the city, if you include the CCBF and one-time gas tax money, those are external funds that came to the city. So it doesn't come from, you know, city taxpayers, if you will, from our levy.
Right, but they're not external funds in the, in the same way that the Fednor grant or the provincial grant are. Because those are, those grants are allocated specifically to this project from upper levels of government.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker. That is correct.
So of the money we are allocating that we have flexibility on allocating, if you can call it that, it's 8.3 million.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker. That's correct.
I, I, I went back, August 12th, 2019, your slides on the, that was the initial presentation of this project in theory. And at that time you spoke of a $6.6 million plaza, including property acquisitions. And the city's contribution at that time was 3.2 million. So we were contributing about 48% of the total project cost at that time. At least in theory, at a, at a very high level, the numbers you were presenting that. Today, including property acquisitions, the project is at 10 million, 200,000, 10.2 million. And we're contributing 8.3 million dollars of that. So we're contributing 81% of the total project cost from funds we could otherwise have control over. So I have listened to all the comments tonight and I do think that we are speaking really two different languages. The, the folks who are in favor of the project, they're talking about the great community benefits that this plaza could provide. And I don't think there's any disagreement on the benefits that the plaza could provide. The disagreement from what I'm hearing and for the reasons for why I'm opposed to it is because of the cost. We would, I think unanimously, and I think we did unanimously support the plaza when the proposed project was 6.6 million. It was anticipated at that time, we would get $2 million in provincial funding, additional federal funds. But those additional funds didn't pan out and we, each time that the project came back, increased the amount that the city was contributing to the project. And, and for that, that's where the opinions, I think, started to diverge on this project. You had additional funding that didn't pan out and increased costs that needed to be covered. And it ended up all falling on our shoulders, the city's shoulders. And each time this council, the majority of it, has approved the additional costs, and I think it is poised to tonight as well. However, the line needed to be drawn somewhere. For me, that line got drawn several meetings ago when the project costs became too significantly. The, the percentage of project costs were paid too significantly by the city. And so I haven't supported it since that time at 81%. I think we are, you know, we're, we're essentially financing this whole thing on our own. And, and I think that that is too high of a financial burden to bear. I think we all agree that the, the plaza concept is good. It's the cost that I cannot, cannot see us approving or do not support us approving. And that's the reason why I won't support this tonight, for a couple of meetings or for a couple of iterations. And I think if we could remove a feature or change the layout or the size of it to bring the cost down, I think you'd have greater council support and greater community support. And, and, and then we may even want to go back to the drawing board to ensure that this fits within the funding envelopes of NOHFC or other federal infrastructure programs. And I think that if those costs got brought down, the 81% of the budget that we're spending on this 10.2 million dollar plaza, you, you would find much more widespread support at this council chamber and in the community.
Thank you, Counselor. The, one comment for clarity, the project did fit in the funding envelope at the NMHFC. Wasn't denied because it didn't fit into the funding envelope. It was denied for other reasons. So Counselor, I have Counselor Gardi next.
Thanks. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. You know, I just, I, I, I'm going to quickly address my, my Ward five colleague and his comments and I, I just want to, he should give himself some credit along with the rest of the council because as it relates to the West End, whether it be Ward five or parts of Ward four and Ward three, I'd say that this council has been as responsive as any council in years. I said, you know, we, we have a state-of-the-art twin-pat arena being constructed, which includes an indoor hockey, an indoor walking track to make it a very inclusive activity center. There have been improvements to Manzo Pool. Soon we'll have a West End Splash Pad located there. The Elliott Field and Park have been identified as a signature park for the community. And we now have pickleball courts there for, for many people to enjoy. We've seen tennis court improvements in the West End. We have active transportation finally in earnest in the West End, those opportunities. And we have a plan to move the hub trail to extend into the West End. And we're bringing more and more people to Pointe Shane Park by way of Counselor Shoemaker's initiative with the beach bus that he, that Counselor Scott and I are supportive of. So you know, Anna Marinelli Park is getting a lot of, a lot of improvements too, and so is the James Street community. As it relates to this matter, Mr. Mayor, we want and we need people to move here. We want students who reside here to stay to study. But we also want to attract more students to study at our post-secondary institutions. We need more students there. We want people to visit here to support our local businesses, like our hoteliers, our restaurateurs and retailers. And we want people who already reside here to have amenities, excuse me, for them and their families to enjoy, to enhance their quality of life. A vibrant, engaging downtown is a critical prerequisite to attracting and retaining young people, families and talent. Every modern sophisticated city should have a public square plaza close to the center of their downtown that is accessible with broad appeal. This will be Sault Ste. Marie's. I support its development and I encourage my council colleagues to do so as well. I've said this repeatedly and I'll say it again, we can't always rely on other levels of government to move our community forward. I'm hopeful that a majority of council, a strong majority of council will vote in favor of this plaza project. Sorry. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Gardi. Counselor Bruny.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Bear and city staff for the report and their commitment to this project. I understand many, many hours were put into this project. Also, I'd like to thank the sponsors, a very impressive list. The Rogers Brook, Roger Brooks report, I truly believe he is on the right track. I don't totally agree with everything, but I must say most recommendations are good. My question to Mr. Bear is, was there any discussion about the removal of the artificial skating rink in the budget? When staff reviewed the RFP and tried to reduce costs, that's number one. And the second question is regarding the 37 weeks for construction to be completed. What insurances does the city have? And also from a cost of 10.1 million, only $200,000 were savings or reduced from the budget. If you can comment on those three and then I'll just have a closing statement. Thanks.
Did you catch those? You caught all that, Mr. Bear?
I believe so. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
And I should, before you go, I should correct. I've been told accurately, the clerk told me that we were going off shot tonight. That's not correct because the Hounds won in game five. There was no Hounds game tonight. My, my in-laws who are avid Hounds fans are going to be annoyed with me for, for overlooking that. But the Hounds have moved on to the next round of the playoffs and so we are still on shot. So, Mr. Bear, go ahead.
There you go, Paul. You're okay.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Bruny. Yes, I think to start at the top, we did look at all options when we were looking at bringing down the cost of the plaza. Certainly taking out major components is something we, we did consider. If you'll recall, when we brought the council report in September, that was something as well that was discussed and considered at that time. And, you know, we really felt that having the, the ice rink was an important component to wintertime activation. Part of the goal with the plaza to get to that 250 days of activation through the year is having something there, passive activation that's going to bring people to the plaza during the winter months. And we felt it was important to include the rink. So it's something we considered, but ultimately our recommendation would be to continue with those major components. As referenced in the presentation, we also have sponsors through Rotary for the Fountain Ring Component. And so you know, that's another rationale to, to keep that component in there. With the $200,000 in savings, you know, the goal that we, or the exercise we went through really was to evaluate any opportunities to bring the cost down, but retain those key components. So that's why the number is approximately 200,000. We did go through a significant value management exercise in the last iteration of the project to get it down to what we thought were kind of those, those essential components for the plaza to allow it to succeed and have all those different aspects of the plaza that will make it successful. So we didn't want to take anything else that we thought would potentially impact the success of the plaza in the long term. And I think I'm forgetting one question. I apologize. There's one more thing.
No, it's no problem. It's the 37 weeks for construction to be completed. What, what assurances does the city have if it's not completed in the 37-week period?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Bruny. You know, it will be a, like other projects we manage with our subcontractors and the contractor in this case, Avery. It's something that we'll be working with them on through the staff interfacing with them regularly to ensure the project does come forward on time. And, you know, it's, although we don't have assurances, we're certainly hopeful that we can work with them to maintain that project schedule and keep the project on track.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a Is that okay? Go ahead. I'll be shorter than Counselor Christian. In the document that Mr. Ver has provided states, "A common piece of feedback heard through future Sault Ste. Marie was that some newcomers expressed difficulty integrating in the community." I truly believe this is true, but do you actually think a skating rink will help, especially when you have five city ice pads, two being built right now, three outdoor rinks, three private ice pads, John Rhodes Oval, John, John Roswell skating trail, and now there's several other private skating trails in the city. So I want to be specific here. I'm not against a downtown plaza. It is required. Roger Brooks has confirmed that. But I disagree with the cost and especially the installation of the artificial ice surface. Staff recommends to utilize the Canada Community Building Fund, 1.3 million to advance the project. I understand this, this approach results in a no levy impact to the taxpayers. But we have, we must also remember, we will have maintenance costs once this facility is built, this plaza is being built. And 265,000, I'm sure, will increase year by year. With the elimination of the artificial ice surface, that cost will be down. To the mayor and the city council and city staff, do you believe it's the right time to build this elaborate downtown plaza? Or a more affordable plaza with the elimination of the artificial ice pack? You can still have a center gathering point with all the amenities as listed in the report, like the water fountain, stage structure, seating area, play area, greenery and advanced lighting. A big screen TV for special events and people will congregate. But do you still believe the artificial ice surface is required when we have so many ice pads available? Are we duplicating a lot of our services? It will be a cost savings of over a million dollars. And also the general maintenance will be reduced once the plaza is built. This will help the downtown area. But again, at what cost do we build it? When half the cost is paid by the gas tax, which we can be allocated back to roads in the future? Did you know so far the city has over 162 damaged claims? That were submitted up to March period? And those will obviously increase until the hot asphalt is And those will obviously increase until the hot asphalt is applied. So I leave it with our councillors. Do you think we should be spending the ten point one million, or can we reduce the cost? And I will vote against it because I believe the cost is too high, and we'll go from there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Bruny. Councillor Dufour? Councillor Dufour, then councillor Hill-Singer, then I'll say a few words.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I don't want to cover the territory that's been well-covered by my fellow councillors. The one thing I did want to put out there, the argument I wanted to make is, I actually don't believe that the majority of the community is against this project. I think it's quite the opposite. You know, I've gotten the same number of emails against the plaza as I got that were against Bay Street. And to be honest, since Bay Street was being, was built, I've gotten nothing but a hundred percent positive feedback. You know, I ran for this seat in three different elections, I knocked on thousands of doors, and at the majority of the doors, what people wanted to know was what kind of a vision I had for the success and the revitalization of our downtown and waterfront. And, you know, while this plaza isn't the entire vision, I think Mr. Vare very well presented that it is a pretty significant plank in the overall path forward to create that downtown. One of the other reasons that I feel that there's such widespread support for this in Sault Ste. Marie is, is I kind of look no further than how many people I know who leave Sault Ste. Marie and spend tons and tons of money in really nice downtowns that are not in Sault Ste. Marie. Downtowns that have been invested in, downtowns that have been prioritized, whether you're talking Traverse City, Toski, Chicago, Toronto. I would argue that one of our best exports is some of our own citizens, you know, who choose to spend weekends away in downtowns that have been invested in. And there's really no reason why Sault Ste. Marie could not be that place, not only for its own citizens, but for other citizens to come visit our city. So with that, I won't recover any of the arguments, except to say that I will certainly be supporting this. My answer is yes, I do believe it is a prudent spending of our money. The only thing I wanted to cover that I do think is a very serious issue and a very valid point to be made is the folks who are talking about the crisis in homelessness, mental health and addiction that our city has experienced. That is a real crisis that we have been dealing with, but it is one that our DSAB board and staff have been rising to the challenge to meet in as many ways as they are legislatively allowed to do so. I'm looking here at our homelessness-related budget that was presented to this council in November. In 2019, we spent just over two million dollars related to homelessness. Just by 2021, that number had grown to over five million dollars. So we have over-doubled our budget just in the two years since 2019 on that alone. We announced last week that we will be investing ten point four million dollars into a brand-new men's shelter, a neighborhood resource center. It's going to have Dr. McLean's offices, transitional units that the city's never had before for our most vulnerable citizens. We have a totally rebuilt Pauline's Place, new shelter operator, all of these things that the city can touch to address homelessness and mental health and addiction. Those things are being funded, and building this plaza does not set any of the next steps for that plan back whatsoever. We still are going to look at, how can we do more supportive housing? How can we do more affordable housing? And how do we continue to grow our homeless shelter system to really meet the needs not only of our clients, but of the downtown? Downtown businesses also care deeply about the people that they see on the streets in front of their businesses, and they want to see them get the kind of care that they need in order to succeed as members of our community. And so, you know, this plaza, I think you can do both at the same time. You can address mental health and addiction and homelessness, and you can also start to build the downtown that is going to keep your residents here and hopefully attract anyone. So happy to support this tonight, and thank you for the time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Dufour. And thank you to the, you and the DSAB board, all the DSAB board members who serve on this, on this council for all the really great work that you've done to address some of those challenges. Councillor Hill-Singer?
I am completely in support of the staff's recommendation that's before us this evening. This is a foundational investment that will create vibrancy, enhance tourism attractiveness, and create social and societal benefits. And we see all of that in all of the comments, that even some of you who are not in favor of doing this have said you can see the benefits that this would bring. Today, I took the opportunity to speak with my colleague in tourism for many years, Paul Pepe, who is the manager of Tourism for Thunder Bay. And here's what actually happens when you make an investment like this. They have undertaken or are seeing significant assessment growth. Public investment has put forward public sector confidence. In the last ten years, they had a vacancy rate downtown of seventy percent. It's very difficult to find space in their downtown now. People are living downtown again. There has been residential conversions, upgrades, new bills. They have seven days a week of activity in their downtown year-round. There are entrepreneurial opportunities for folks coming all over the place, but in particular, he mentioned that newcomers were very open to these ideas and were taking up these opportunities to bring their culture from an entrepreneurial way. It created four hundred new jobs. And one hundred and eighty-two businesses are working collaboratively with that municipality and making things better and better all the time. That's why we have to do this, because we make this investment and it's gonna deliver results. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. So, so look, I'm gonna keep my comments brief because of a number of them said, but I do, I do want to address a few things that I think are important, and frankly, not to sway any of your votes. It appears to me now that all of your votes are entrenched one way or the other. The project's gonna get the support it's looking for, which I'm happy about. So I'm largely speaking to the community when I make my comments. And I want to just address one comment councillor Scott made, because I think it's an important one. And, and I don't, maybe it's because of my position as the mayor, as opposed to being a ward councillor who's looking out for a ward, but I do want to recognize councillor Gardi's comments. You guys have done a good job in Ward Five, and there's a lot of things happening in Ward Five, but I don't see municipal investments belonging to a ward. I don't believe what we're doing in the downtown belongs to councillor Dufour and councillor Vazal. It's their ward, but I believe it is our community's investment. I don't believe Pointe Cheyenne Park belongs to you and councillor Gardi, right? Or the folks that live out there. It belongs to the community at large, and we've done a good job trying to get more people out there to enjoy it. But I want to use a metaphor, just to carry on the metaphor that you used, is when there's a crack in the foundation, and it's a good metaphor. But we have to decide collectively what we see as the crack in the foundation. What is the actual crack in the foundation? And I suggest to you, in my seven years here, I don't believe the crack in the foundation is the state of the roads. I believe we should be investing more in roads. And I believe this council has made the decision to invest more in roads. And I believe we are investing millions more in roads today than we were a couple years ago. That number's gonna continue to increase. But that's not the crack in the foundation, in my opinion. My opinion's only relevant for the next seven months, but it is still relevant. The crack in the foundation is that we have to make these type of investments in our community. And if we do not make these type of investments in our community, we will not see the vibrancy and the growth and the assessment that we want to see. And the reality is, we don't habitually make these type of investments in our community. And when we do, it's a big deal, and it shouldn't be. And if you look at the amount of investments made in other communities, in our comparators, these quality of life investments, they dwarf ours. So this should be commonplace. It shouldn't have taken to the last term of council to get a splash pad in Sault Ste. And we will have a second splash pad. But it took a lot of years to get to a place where we had two splash pads. And actually, when the cost came out for the second splash pad, we knocked it down. And one of the reasons why we knocked it down is I don't think there's a cultural kind of acceptance in the community that these are normal types of investments to make. And we have to make them normal, because we are competing with other communities for people, and they're making these investments. And I invite you to look at the investments Sudbury's are making, and the size of them. And I invite you to look at the investments that Thunder Bay has made and is making, and the size of them. And the reality is, we had a big investment, thirty-two million dollars. We were willing to borrow it all, and we didn't have to. And tonight, you saw in that presentation, there's a nine million dollar savings just on interest. Forget the capital we didn't outlay, but we're saving nine million on interest on the investment we didn't have to make. Now, we can do the math on this two ways, and I think it's important to be clear about it. The actual money from our municipal budget is two point eight five million. It's a third of the interest we were willing to pay for a twin pad in one area of our city. Now, I recognize councillor Shoemakers' point, we did receive five million dollars from the federal government that we can use for other things, but it's a limited use. And it's not money that came from the rate base. So that's something that people in the community have to recognize. We're authorizing a two point eight five million dollar investment of our own money, but then we are authorizing the expenditure of federal funds we receive. But the reality is, these are modest investments in a critical part of our community that we all have talked about improving. And these have to become normalized investments. And I think that's one of the things we're doing today as a council. I agree with all the comments that were made about debt. We should be borrowing more to do more things. They know, when I say they, staff knows, that's my opinion. But culturally, in this municipal corporation, we don't look to borrow very quickly. That's left us in a very solid position financially, and we'll leave the next council with a lot of opportunity to do great things. And I encourage you to. But we're not gonna get there if we make a big production about spending modest amounts of money to improve a core area of our community. And I think one of the most important things we're doing tonight, beyond moving forward with this, is saying to the community, these investments are critical. We need to make them, we need to believe in ourselves and invest in ourselves. And we're seeing lots of really healthy and good activity in downtown. We're seeing new businesses, we're seeing some young entrepreneurs, we're seeing significant investments that dwarf this one in buildings in the downtown. And we can't ask for that, or continue to expect that, or hope it happens, if we don't make our own. This is a modest, reasonable investment that came after years of collective work in our community and a ton of consultation. And it makes sense. I'm very happy to see it move forward tonight. I'm happy to support it, and I can hope we get far down the road on the mill market investment before the end of this council term. And I hope that the next mayor and council have more ambition than we did, and do more than we did. But I hope they can build on what we've done and find some political courage to recognize that these are the right things to do. So the clerk has called the vote up. I think that is pretty much the extent of it, so we'll call it now, all in favor. Opposed. So the motion passed eight, three. And on timing, that's been raised a couple times, I want to say, we've got a contractor here that the city has a lot of experience with, that I think generally delivers all the projects that we've had them deliver on time and on budget. So we've got, I have a lot of confidence that this contract will be delivered on time and on budget, because we have a lot of good experience with the contract.
So the eight point three point two is the tender with respect to the downtown plaza development. And it's a motion by councillors Nero and Hillsinger, resolved that the report of the manager of purchasing dated May two, twenty twenty-two be received, and that the tender submitted by Avery Construction Limited for construction of the downtown plaza at the negotiated tendered price of eight million five hundred ninety-four thousand five hundred thirty dollars and seventy-one cents plus HST be approved.
Throw it all in favor. I thought she had read it, because it was up when you described on our computers. Opposed?
There were two.
Oh, there were two?
Yeah. One was to accept the deputy CAO's report and authorize the allocation from the Canada Community Building Fund, and the other was the tender.
Do you have me as in favor, then? Because I don't have that vote.
I do now.
Okay.
Councillor Christian?
He was in favor.
So I have that also as eight, three.
That's correct.
That will take us to bylaws. I have a motion by councillors Nero and Shoemaker, resolved that all bylaws under item eleven of the agenda under date May two, twenty twenty-two be approved.
All in favor. Councillor?
And a motion by councillors Nero and Shoemaker, resolved that this council now adjourned.
All in favor. Councillor?